We have reached the 10 o'clock hour. It is Tuesday, April 11th, and the Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for which said Board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. Kylie, will you take the role, please?
Supervisor Howard.
President.
Supervisor Starkey.
Here.
Supervisor Wilson.
Here.
Supervisor Borges.
Here.
Chair Short.
I'm here. Now if you would join me in a moment of reflection. Thank you. Supervisor Starkey, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Neil, do we have any introduction of new employees?
Yeah, thank you Chair. I think we have quite a few of them this morning, which is pretty exciting.
Outstanding.
We'll go ahead and start with the Sheriff's Office. And I'm not sure if Captain Stevens or Under Sheriff Perry will be doing introductions.
Good morning, Board. Today, we're here to introduce three new correctional officers that we've hired over the last few months. This is Correctional Officer Drew Good, Correctional Officer Jose Garcia, and Correctional Officer Anthony Garcia.
Welcome.
It's a happy coincidence.
Yeah, well, congratulations and thank you for joining our team.
Thank you, guys. Welcome.
Chair, we also have the Director of Health and Human Services here to introduce some new employees.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. We are excited to introduce four new staff to three different branches. So I'm going to ask Social Services Branch Manager to come up first, and then you'll hear from the others.
Good morning, Board. We're happy to be here today to introduce two new employees. They both join our team. John Bransford is new to the area-ish, kind of, five years, but new to Social Services, so we're happy to have him on board. And then we have Kaylee Carter, who has been here all her life, raised, born and raised here, so we're happy to have them on board. Thank you.
Neil, welcome, guys. Thank you for coming.
Good morning, Board. Cheyenne Hogan, Program Manager for Del Norte County Behavioral Health Branch. With me, Lizelle Sanders, who joins us as a peer support specialist. I think these are really a great opportunity for those with lived experience to kind of enter into the behavioral health workforce and hopefully, you know, advance in their skillset and promote within. And so, Lizelle.
Hi, how are you? I'm feeling a little underdressed today. I apologize. I'm happy to be here. I'm happy to show others there's a better way and take it one day at a time.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. My name is Sunny Baker. I'm a Public Health Program Manager. I oversee services and programs on the Community Health Division in the Public Health Branch. I would like to introduce Stefania Papinos, Health Education Coordinator for CalFresh Health Living Program. As a Health Education Coordinator, Stefania will promote health targeting low-income CalFresh eligible population in underserved communities through nutrition education and fiscal activity promotion for obesity and chronic disease prevention. Stefania is a longtime community resident, is well-known as a massage therapist. Over the years, Stefania also has been actively involved in community events at the farmer's market and health fair, community health fair, provided health education, and hands-on demonstration of holistic health and self-care, including chair and infant massage, and laughter yoga, and hula-hooping and dancing. I have no doubt she'll be a valuable asset to the public health team. We are very excited to have her join the Public Health Branch. Please welcome Stefania.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. I'm so excited to be a part of the community and do good things out there. So cheers to that.
Good deal. Thank you.
All right, Chair, we also have an introduction for the Administration Department, specifically for the Veteran Services Office. Through our recent recruitment, we were able to hire Mr. Ramsey Williamson as the next county Veteran Service Officer. And he's here to say hello and introduce himself.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For those of you who don't already know me, my name is Ramsey Williamson. I'd like to thank Randy Hooper, Neil Lopez, and anybody else involved in the hiring process for giving me the opportunity to assist our most distinguished individuals in our county, our veterans. I myself began my journey to become a veteran in 1996, when I joined the Army and became a military police officer. Over the next eight years of active-duty service, I rose to the ranks until I was honorably discharged in 2004. Now, if the Board would indulge me for one more minute, I'd like to ask anybody that is a veteran in attendance to raise your hand or stand. Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ramsey. You're welcome.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Chair, we actually do have one more for the Sheriff's Office. There's a new dispatcher being introduced.
Oh, outstanding.
Which is very exciting.
Yes, it is.
Board, this is also Anastasia Nichaev. She's our newest dispatcher.
Thanks for having us.
And she's currently working her way through the treading program.
Good deal. Welcome. That's for sure.
Thank you.
Yep. Glad you're here.
Thanks.
Okay, that's great stuff. Thank you. Thank you for that. Joel, do we have anything to report on a closed session?
Nothing today, Chair.
Okay. The Chair requests any deletions, corrections, or additions from the Board members to the agenda at this time. Is there any additions? We do have one item being pulled off consent, and that's item number five. We will not be considering that item today. At this time, we'll receive any brief reports or announcements relative to county or Del Norte programs from any of the Board members.
Chair, I'd like to, if you...
Yeah, absolutely. Supervisor Starkey?
Thank you. So recently, we had kind of a switch in how much we were going to report out, and was it too time-consuming, and all of that. I did create a newsletter so that the public can know exactly what I'm doing. It is posted on my social media. But I'm feeling very, I don't know the word, conflicted. And so, I'm gonna report out. And that's just how I want to do things. And I do apologize because I know it adds to the length of the agenda. But I feel it's a responsibility. It's my own personal choice of what I'd like to do. So it is the return of the report out for Valerie Starkey, kind of like the Return of the Jedi, but that was filmed here. We're going to talk about that. So the last couple of weeks, I've been working very hard on the K'omei Festival. And my interest in this is not so much for the boat, although I think the boat triggered the sister-city relationship. And I believe that is something that's very valuable for our community in and of itself. But my interest in it was that we are going to use this opportunity to provide emergency preparedness education for our youth. Over the last two weeks, we delivered pillowcases to each of the classes that are going to be participating in this event. They're going to decorate them. They're their go-bags. We're going to talk about what goes in a go-bag. On Friday, this Friday morning, from 9:00 to 12:00, you're going to see 750 3rd to 5th graders coming to the K'omei Festival, where inside the Cultural Center, we're going to be manned by all the first responders. So we've got CHP, CCPD, Del Norte Sheriff's Department, Del Norte Ambulance, the Fire Department. And all of those individuals are going to be there, interacting with this youth, so that it gives an impression to these youth that our first responders are approachable, and they're individuals who are helping our community in the event of emergencies. So that is going to be very exciting. I'm grateful to be a part of that. I also kept, continued to participate in our Reaching Rural Initiative. And that's the initiative where we were selected, one of eight counties nationwide, to come up with some program that we can do and we can identify just for rural communities. And we have landed on a proposed project of residential treatment. But we don't want it just to be a normal residential treatment. We want it to be a treatment geared after the wellness court that our tribes currently partner with our Superior Court on. So it's going to be a residential treatment that it really encompasses a wellness, a family whole response to the opioid crisis. Over the last few weeks, I pay attention. We have had, I would say, at least a dozen overdoses in this community. We've got to do something different. We have to keep responding to this. And that is one thing that this Reaching Rural Initiative is helping us do. I attended the local Behavioral Health Board meeting. We had a great education on the fentanyl crisis and how it has increased so significantly in all of our small communities, as well as nationwide. We also got an update on the Mobile Crisis Unit. And that is something that's a project we've been working on for the last year. It should be rolling out by January of this year. And it is a way for us to respond to mental health crises in the field. If we're able to respond to them and treat them in the field, perhaps we can reduce the amount of individuals who are being booked into the county jail, who are being taken to the hospital for a 51-50 hold. If we're still going to identify those that need that additional services, or that punishment, or that incarceration, however, if we can reduce the amount that just goes there automatically, I think it's going to be valuable for this community. I spent a lot of time in the last two weeks working on learning more about the allegations that our Smith River water was contaminated. I was really fortunate. We have so many talented and smart people in our community. A man by the name of Dane Robinson, who's a licensed environmental geologist, reached out to me and sat with me for an hour, going over all of the mines and the impacts that they have. And he was able to read the reports and assure me that the water is safe to drink. And I think that's the biggest message that we need to make sure we get out there. And I'd hoped that we had done that a little bit more robustly, but the water is safe. If it's not safe, we will be the first to make sure that we alert the residents. And then finally, I did meet with Senator McGuire on two occasions. I had dinner with him on Thursday night, at which we discussed a lot of things that I'm working on and how the state can be of assistance to us. And then the Chamber of Commerce hosted a meeting, and I was able to attend that as well, where Senator McGuire talked about some of the state-of-the-state issues that he is working on. So that is my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Supervisor Starkey. Supervisor Howard?
Thank you. I appreciate your time on this, Mr. Chairman. And I, like Ms. Starkey, have really feel that these Board reports are important and miss them. So I promise not to take too long, but I do want to talk about a few things. I'm continuing a lot of work with Caltrans Pacific to Jacobs Consulting audit of Highway 199, really trying to move projects forward, and especially education and understanding around statistics that have been collected for a 10-year period around that highway, and how they impact decisions, specifically on Caltrans and going and do upgrades in these sections, whether it's signage to slow down, speed up, how to approach a curve, guardrail, striping, and even abrasive-type surfaces that really help you to stick to the road on those rainy days. But also, the type of accidents that are occurring on those roads, whether they're single vehicle, whether they're multi-vehicle, whether they're motorcycle, whether they're trucks. So there's a lot of history out there. And I've been getting a lot of requests from both Epic and friends of Del Norte to understand that information more, as they had heard back from the judge about the most recent lawsuit that was denied. And in this case, the defendants, Caltrans, were able to move forward with starting a plan. 199 projects, once again, long overdue in my opinion, but still, we need the understanding of that information. Participated in a meeting of Redwood Rise, and then also meeting of the tri-agency with Sheriff, not Sheriff Wilson, Supervisor Wilson. And had a really expedited, but more importantly, a meeting of Howland Hill residents along Douglas Park about a proposed pilot program that state and national parks wanted to do for Howland Hill Road, and trying to push that forward for June. So we did a very impromptu outreach to the Douglas Park community and received probably close to, you know, close to 50 residents around the park for that meeting. I know Neil Lopez and Randy Hooper and John Olson from our Community Development Department showed up, because whatever ends up occurring there is going to impact those Douglas Park residents and likely what we end up doing on our county roads to help reduce some of these things that we've seen with close to 1.2 million visitors treading across this road annually. So Douglas Park, de facto from our success as a community in expanding our tourism industry, have also allowed a lot of people to see this gorgeous place in our county, but it just cannot handle the relative sheer numbers of vehicles traveling it. And those people pass through a county road that generally is quite narrow. It's got children playing on it, and those folks needed to express their concerns and feelings, and more importantly, so the county could hear it too, because whatever they do, they'll react. But I did get some early promises from Parks that whatever goes forward, they're going to partner with us to help support any essential cost that comes from this. So I was really appreciative to hear that and look forward to many more meetings as we approach. This is not set in stone, and they're just now collating all the feedback from the community members. Hopefully, we'll see a report soon about that. As Supervisor Starkey mentioned, the K'omei Festival, I think is going to be pretty awesome. My understanding is that there's about 30 tickets left for the 270-plus seats available at the Crescent Oak Auditorium on Friday. So if you are interested, please get on there and get those sucked up. They are free. But it's an incredible event and a great way to honor a 10-year anniversary of K'omei coming to our shores. I just want to emphasize this piece with our schoolchildren. The opportunity to partner with the Chamber of Commerce, the city, the County Office of Education around children learning about emergency preparedness as it relates to tsunami could be probably one of the biggest benefits of having this festival here this coming Friday. It's a recognition that it's something that we always face in this community and could happen without warning, to where we have 10 minutes to evacuate those near-shore areas. So glad it's happening. I really appreciate Supervisor Starkey's help in getting this prepared. Had a North Coast Regional Resource Partnership meeting, kind of educational process with Supervisor Wilson. And he's going to be stepping in that role for Supervisor Hemmingson, who has left office. But it was really helpful to get Supervisor Wilson up to speed on what that partnership does, more importantly, around water infrastructure-type projects, which they continue to fund, and then also forest and biomass-type issues in reducing those fuel loads on our force and bringing the technology to our force to help deal with it. Attended a Board Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting, and then also had a discussion along with Supervisor Short and Supervisor McGuire at the Chamber of Commerce offices.
Senator.
Sorry, with Senator McGuire. And then also sat down with Community Development Department to have a meeting with the California Coastal Commission to talk about impacts around Union Street and our homeless camps that are developing there. I think this is going to be a very important meeting going forward in the future, but this was essentially to lay a groundwork for them to come to visit the site themselves, to see the impact to the environment, what could be done about it. And as Supervisor Starkey brought up around the water issue, also done quite a bit of research around that, also with the Smith River Community Service District, whose groundwater, which they do test on a regular basis, is quite safe to drink. It's the surface water that we're dealing with, with high trace elements of these annelites, which include arsenic, chromium, and copper. We've got about 10 years of data from the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board. I was able to secure that data, and hopefully, if this issue comes back for the Board to consider, I'd like to be able to share that data, because there are some high levels in our surface water, specifically in those watersheds, that I think these remediation efforts as proposed for county support in that letter are definitely needed. So that's the end of my report. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Supervisor Howard. I do appreciate the reporting out. I guess an apology is in order on my account, because my intent was to give each of us the freedom to report out as we saw fit as supervisors for our district. It was never meant to chill that or suppress that reporting out process. So with that, we will move on to our consent agenda. Do we have any public comment on our consent agenda at this time?
Good morning. I'm speaking to Number Four, where you're going to be approving support letter. Recently, I submitted a 318-page complaint to the Attorney General's Office for willful misuse of public money and embezzlement. From January 2018 until June 2021, Charlie Helms, Harbor District, former Harbor District Master, spent over $63,000 of public money on airline tickets, restaurants, hotels, clothes, cosmetics, shoes, car rentals, and skin products. Harshwell Audit Club firm, excuse me, reported in 2019 and 2020 that the Harbor District refused to provide credit card statements, bank reconciliation statements, and Board approvals. Tim Patrick spent $10,000 within 16 months via credit card on restaurants, airline tickets for him, his wife, and one other individual, as well as hotels and food. His most recent purchases was $85 for a pizza. The Harbor District refuses to abide by Special District Accounting Principles mandated by the state. Writing a letter of support means you support their lack of regulations regarding their finances. I would seriously start looking into this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Was that a consent item?
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Wanted to start by thanking you for calling a couple consent agenda items on the last meeting, and again today. Still looking for some guidance on how things get on the consent agenda and how they're polled. If those two items that were polled last week, or two weeks ago, will be back on future meetings. The water quality is of particular importance. I would request this Board not approve. Number nine, the Board report says that there is an alternative not to approve. And sometimes saying no may be the best answer. There is also another alternative not mentioned, and that would be to do away with the COVID-19 addendum. Says financing on the Board report. No county general funds. Just wondering how we can initiate a program with no funds. I mean, these providing masks and testing, providing information, those come with a cost. Even typing the addendum has a cost. The COVID-19 policy that the Board adopted has been detrimental to the community. And we continue to see those effects. I'm asking that you stop the propaganda, and you do away with the COVID-19 addendum. Excuse me. I would request that you not attach, or not approve, number 10. This gives unilateral authority to the Director of Health and Human Services. This further increases the homelessness in our community. It attracts homeless by providing these services and these standards. These people need help, but we cannot continue to put the burden on taxpayers. It's unsustainable, and it's not good for the community. We talked about Howland Hill Road. I was talking to community members that are afraid to walk up there because of the transients. And we are based on tourism. And our hotels are getting used for homeless, becoming rampant. Tourism will also be affected. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on the consent agenda?
Yeah, good morning, Board members. And I want to welcome the new Board members, Dean Wilson and Joey Borges. Just first time I've seen you guys up here, so welcome to the Board. And with respect to the Board, I want to speak directly to the audience on YouTube. Firstly, I'd like to mention, I'm a video photojournalist, and the only news source for the happenings out of Point St. George on YouTube. Firstly, very few people come to these meetings because they don't know when these meetings are happening, where they are, and how to get in touch with these types of meetings here. And I'm continually asking to be put on a mailing list, and I'm still waiting to be put on a mailing list. Okay? And recently, Point St. George was on a... And recently, Point St. George was on an agenda with the California Coastal Conservancy, which is a large entity, and I'll basically speak on that, along with South Beach and Harbor, and no one showed either there or on Zoom, with the exception of the Mavris family. Only by a stroke of luck at the last minute, we got on and joined into the agenda there. California Conservancy is a state agency established in nineteen seventy-six to protect and improve natural resources and waterways, to help people get and enjoy the outdoors and to sustain local economies along the California coast. Their annual budget is three-hundred-and-eighty-four million as of two thousand and twenty-two. They are also part of the California Natural Resource Agency. Their annual budget is eight-point-seven-six-seven billion with a B. That's beyond the reaches of this little community. The agency's work along with the entirety of California coast, including the interior of San Francisco Bay, and is responsible for planning and coordinating federal land sales and acquire interstate land, as well as award grant funding for improvement projects. The Board of Directors for the agency is made up of seven members who are appointed by the Governor of California and approved by the California Legislature. Members of the California State Assembly and California State Senate engage and provide oversight with their legislative capacities. In that agenda, they spoke on the matters at Point St. George, and I want to state my YouTube channel, P S G Surfer M at YouTube. I'm going to say that again, P S G Surfer M at YouTube. It has over twenty thousand viewers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. So after running for the board and being beat up real bad, the been taking a lot of a big look at things around the county, and I just wanted to back up on Ms. Sutter's thing about Item Four. You know, there is some really, appears to be some really bad management there, and throwing good money after bad money doesn't sound too good. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the consent agenda? Okay, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board.
Chair, can you just repeat on record that Item Number Five is being pulled from the consent?
I thank you. Yes, we are not considering Item Number Five on the consent agenda.
So I would actually like to pull Item Number Six for a separate vote.
Okay, pulling Item Number Six for a separate vote. Is there any others?
Go ahead and then.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Number Five, which was pulled and Number, or was, yeah, pulled, and Number Six, which was pulled for further discussion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Before we consider Item Number Six, we have reached our ten-twenty-five time, so we will move.
Chair?
Yes.
We got the proclamation as well.
Ah, thank you very much. Yes, let's do that first, so that doesn't get scooted down the agenda very far. Thank you, Kylie, for that.
Thank you, Kylie. So the proclamation that we're reading into the record today is the Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation for April two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas sexual assault affects children, youth, adults, and elders of all genders from all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds with public health and social justice implementations for every person in Delnart County, and whereas staff and volunteers of the North Coast Race Crisis Team provide twenty-four-hour service to survivors and their significant others and encourages every person to end sexualized violence by providing prevention education and awareness-raising programs through Humboldt and Delnart Counties. And whereas no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, but can through collaboration and partnership work together to support those impacted, improve responses, and ensure that survivors are not victimized. Now, therefore, we, the Delnart County Board of Supervisors reaffirms our commitment to the North Coast Race Crisis Team, and holding to our values of HEAL, which is an acronym, help meet survivors where they are at, empower them in their healing journeys, affirm their choices, and listen to their stories, and acknowledges April two thousand and twenty-twenty-three as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, passed and adopted this day of the eleventh day of April two thousand and twenty-three, and signed by Chair Short. Is anybody here to receive this proclamation today?
Thank you, Supervisor Howard.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Nice to see you again. On behalf of the North Coast Rape Crisis Team, I just want to thank you for supporting survivors and for supporting our team. We can't do this work alone. We are, we have strong partnerships with law enforcement, victim witness, the District Attorney's Office, our tribal partners, and I invite everyone to our office, which is open eight-thirty to five, Monday through Friday. We're located in the old Child Support Office right across from Innateca. We have a beautiful new sign-up, so please come by and see us. And along with the nonprofit grant that we just received from all y'all, so thank you so much, we served over a hundred and twenty survivors and their families just in Delnart County last year. And so this is an issue that continues to plague our community, and we are here twenty-four hours a day, so please reach out. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and if not, thank you again.
Thank you for being here. Okay, at this time, we're going to go to our ten-twenty-five timed item, and that is our general public comment period. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you're addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be able to ask to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Is there any general public comments?
So, yeah, last week, I can't see. Three of you attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting, which is in violation of the Ron Act. You didn't meet any of the six exceptions, and two of you know better. So I don't know what we can do about this, because, I mean, you're a love card DA. She don't care. She don't care if there's secret meetings going on, especially when it deals with the state of the county, the state the county is in. That's what I understand this meeting was about. So you folks that don't report out, my Cepa still stands, because all of you didn't report out. You think that it's not important to report out, and it's your right if you don't want to do that, but I'm going to make more work for your county council. This has got to stop. The secret stuff needs to stop. It's just like that Holland Hill Road thing. Sixty people were in that building. I didn't get to stay. I had to leave because I had an asthma attack. But the thing is, is, you know, the whole county needs to be involved in a decision like that, not just Douglas Park and Holland Hill. It's going to impact businesses. And there again, the meeting was not well advertised at all. And this business of not reporting to the public and not letting the public know when the meetings are and having all this secret crap going on, you don't, you do not create confidence by doing what you're doing right now. So, folks, let's get it together, because if I have to do a writ of mandate, I will. I don't care. I got all the time in the world, but you folks don't. Thank you.
Is there any other general public comment?
Hi.
Good morning.
I'm Short. Sorry about that. My name's Sherri Smithson, and I'm here to ask for some support and help. I've lived in Delnart County for forty-seven years with my husband Harvey. We live at one-nine-nine Vipon Drive, and we purchased our property way back in nineteen seventy-six. At that time, there was a beautiful field across from us with wildflowers and lots of room for floodwater. As we lived there and watched our family grow, we watched our neighborhood grow, too. And as it grew, we watched houses develop, the one-hundred Vipon and two-hundred Vipon and two-fifty-seven Vipon, and we watched Vipon Court across Lake Girl Drive grow and get houses. Growth is good for our county. The homes are beautiful, and our neighbors are wonderful. The problem is, someone, we've been told the county, dug a drainage ditch along two sides of our property, the northern side and the western side. The ditch was to help with runoff, and it did great running off in nineteen seventy-six and seventy-seven and seventy-eight. Then, as the neighborhood grew, we could no longer handle the drainwater, and the drain got fuller and fuller every year and spilled over more and more every year. My husband's a great guy. Our fiftieth wedding anniversary is on the fifteenth. If I make it one more week, we've made it fifty years. Harvey works hard to do all kinds of things, including maintaining that ditch. He gets out there and waders with shovels and pulls out debris. He cuts down tree branches and hauls them off our property, but we've been told we don't own the ditch. It's not ours. We don't have the right to do things to the ditch or the trees. It's county maintained. Well, it's been a great philosophy, only no one's maintained it. It just sits. I have a super-old triplicate article that I know you can't see, but in nineteen eighty-three, my middle son Russell fell in the ditch. Anyone who knows Russell wouldn't know there was anything wrong with him today, but at that time, he wore what I call Forrest Gump braces, and he was pretty physically disabled. If it wasn't for my son Daniel, I would have lost Russell. He would have drowned in that ditch. So the county came out. They looked at the ditch. Max Bridges, who was the county engineer at that time, he said it's his ditch. He said the road department maintained it. He said he didn't mean to make a long pond. He said they'd look into it and do something. Want to know what they did? They cut the tree roots out of it. They came along with big, huge chainsaws and cut out tree roots. It made the ditch wider, and it flowed better. Not long after that, a tree fell and blocked all of Vipon. Hundreds of people were stopped on Vipon. But in the olden days, we had loggers and fishermen. Loggers have big chainsaws. They have winches on their trucks. A neighbor drove up the street, and what did he do? He stopped everything he was doing, and he cleared the road to help his neighbors.
Sherri, your time has expired, but we can definitely refer you to the Community Development Department and.
I've already been to the road department. I've already been to my supervisor. I've already been, but I will stop, Darren. May I leave you this?
Certainly, you can give that to Kylie.
I don't know what to do, but my driveway was completely blocked, and Harvey and I couldn't get out, and then my driveway was flooded with three to eight inches of water. We can't drain all the neighbors.
Thank you.
Oh, good, someone my size. Good morning. I'm just going to make, I'm just going to make my comment as a county resident, if you don't mind. Sorry about that. I'm going to make my comment as a county resident, Norma Williams, a resident of Delnart County, in regards to board reporting on all your parts. I thought about this long and hard since the last meeting. I was thinking about emailing all of you, but figured I might as well take the opportunity now. I only want to make a suggestion. For those of you who wish to make a board report in public, that's fine. The only suggestion that I have is that possibly you post your reports for all of you, each and every single one of you. You can have it as an attachment to the board agenda, or you could possibly post it after the meeting or even before the meeting on the county website. That's what it's there for. That's where a lot of us who have internet access go and look to see what's coming on this and other future meetings. That's my suggestion. The reason why is very simple. Each and every single one of you were elected by your constituents. They expect you to be transparent, and you are to be held accountable by them. You are to be accountable to them. And keep in mind that you can't just do that when it comes election time, which for three of you is next year. Right? Three of you from next year. So those are my suggestions, and I really, really think that you need to take that into consideration. We, the people, put you where you're at. You need to be transparent and accountable to those of us who put you there, and if you're not, we then hold the right to have you removed and voted out. Thank you.
Good morning again, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd like to empower you to be influential. You have a lot of influence on the community with your policy, and I just ask that you embrace that and do as much as you can. I know we have the celebration with our sister city this weekend, and I'm sure it'll be a nice event, and I just kind of want to tie it into our water quality issues. You know, we know the nuclear reactor in Japan, Fukushima, had a catastrophic malfunction, and they're releasing millions of gallons of hot water into the Pacific Ocean. The board, or the boat, landed on our beach, and it's likely that those radioactive isotopes are likely to land on our beach as well. So I'd ask to kind of look out for that, maybe ask some questions about that. Was wondering how the emergency preparedness test went last week. If anybody'd have, we're putting enough money into emergencies. Hopefully, it worked well. Supervisor Howard, you say you've been looking at the mines, the legacy mines, for like the last ten years. Just wondering why you haven't acted sooner, if there's potential risk for contaminating our public water. I think it's similar to one-ninety-nine and the realignment. That wasn't really an option. You talked about putting up signs and maybe repaving, you know, an abrasive asphalt to hold people to the road. You're working with Friends of Delnart and Epic. We need that road realigned and safe. You know, the lawsuit that Friends of Delnart placed was found to be illegitimate. You know, and they shouldn't be able to make those kind of claims, similar to putting arsenic in our drinking water. You should hold them accountable. You should hold yourself accountable and get that road repaired. Appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other general public comment?
Okay, good morning, Board. I guess I should have introduced myself, but most of you know who I am, Hank Aiken, and I'm also the Vice President of Big Rock. The reason I came in today is a little twofold. I expect to meet the three minutes, but if I don't, I would hope you'd give me a little So this is going to sound like it reflects on Mr. Howard, and it's not my intention. And if I happen to call any of you by your first name, I don't mean to be disrespectful. Okay. So Big Rock is not just a water district, okay? It's a community service district. That means we look out for the welfare of the entire township of Ha'ouche and across the river there. So having said that, there's some things that have been bothering me about that, and that is the fact that we get left out on a lot of things. We're elected officials, you know, we got, there's five O's, and we don't hear about a lot of stuff that's going on until it's already happened. And I hate to say it, but two of you made my point this morning, and that was that experts were reached out to for this mine thing, yet Big Rock didn't hear from any of you. Howard might have. I did send emails to you guys, and a couple of you got back to me, but. did send emails to you guys and a couple of you got back to me, but a lot of you didn't. And some other things we got left out on was the walking trail, the one it was put in. We feel we left out on the Stout Grove issue that's going on now, the mining issues, and advertising for tourism. You know, there's a lot of advertising going on, but nobody mentions Hauchi. Hauchi actually paid for their own advertising this year and they paid a lot of money, a lot of money. And I know for this meeting, you met the minimum qual- the requirements for posting. I get that. But that's just a piece of paper and a window and, you know, I would think for fellow people doing the same kind of work, that there would be a little more notification for that. So, it's interesting to me on that project that we had time to interview for a Humboldt paper, but not a Crystal City paper. We had time to rent the hall to go to the meeting, but not, you know, like I said, reach out. Those are just some little things, but, okay, so I went out and checked out the whole road thing. I kind of drove back and forth to see what everybody's talking about. But I don't know what you and the Parkside are saying because I didn't get to go to the meeting. And can I go over to three minutes? Would you pull the board and ask?
You've got three minutes, Hank.
Okay. All right. Anyway, so the road condition, I looked at it. There's some safety issues, some other things I'd like to talk about. As far as the mines go, the water is safe, okay? The things they're talking about leaching into the river, they're all naturally occurring minerals. And I don't see really anybody benefiting from this. And like you said last week, if you go up and disturb that stuff, it's liable to get worse. So, anyway, if you feel like reaching out and talking about it, I'd be glad to. Thanks.
Thank you, Hank. Any other general public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dave Powell, thank you all for the time. I appreciate it. I just wanted to say that vacation rentals are good for our community. You knew I was gonna say that, didn't you? And it's true. And we have the fortune of having one of the groups, one of the performing groups from the festival this weekend staying at our house this weekend. And they're a percussion group, so hopefully they don't practice outside. I know. But they may. But they're very excited to have a one place where they can all stay, where they can provide their own meals, where they can use as a base to do the different things that they're going to do. So, it's a great thing. It really is a benefit. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dave. Any other public comment? Okay, I'll close the general public comment at this period at this time and we will- we will back up to item number six. Supervisor Board is-
So, I pulled number six because, well, I just don't agree with renting vehicles. It's a hundred thousand dollar a year expense and, you know, we're signing up for five years. I'm more of the mindset that if we have the money, we buy the vehicles we need. Going down the line, if funding gets cut or if something gets questioned, we have to decide between providing services or renting vehicles. And if we move forward with this, my understanding is we would liquidate the cars that we have. So, there's the chance that the funding runs out. If we can't continue the payments to the lease company, then we have to scramble to try to find money to buy twenty new cars or twelve or fourteen, whatever number it is. So, I guess I'm not in favor of renting, releasing cars. So, that's why I pulled it.
Okay. Could invite Renell up here to speak to it. That's for- oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it is Health and Human Services. So, Renell, if you had-
And then after Renell, if we could hear from our C A O who has arranged for the- we approved this previously, but for the fleet operation. So, I just wanted to say that after Renell, I'd like to hear from him.
Okay. That's fine.
All right. Good morning again, board. So, specifically to the vehicles, I'll let Neil talk about the county agreement and what the process was through that. But initially, even before I was appointed to my position, this was a discussion that took place with my predecessor and the board and administration in regards to moving to this model and would it make sense. Initially, the Enterprise team recommended D H H S replace twenty-seven vehicles out of our about forty-six fleet. Based on their age, our oldest vehicle is a nineteen ninety-nine Ford Taurus, doesn't get a lot of use, actually has its own mold growing in it sometimes and is really, you know, not safe to drive out of town. Sometimes our funding is limited to buy fixed assets. And so, I know some of the discussion was that a lease may be more appropriate. So, out of that forty-six vehicles, twenty-five are older than ten years. And just this concept of leasing the vehicles was brought forward as a way to provide newer, more reliable cars to the county, not just D H H S. D H H S is the first to move forward with this lease agreement and making this request. I'd have to pull the exact numbers, but we typically put at least two vehicles for purchase in our budget, which equates to about a hundred thousand dollars. So, pretty equivalent to what the lease amount is. After that five-year period, there is a- it doesn't work exactly like a typical personal lease would. Is there some value left in the car that we can put into a new lease as we reevaluate our needs? So, that was what we analyzed in making this decision and recommendation to move forward. And I'll turn it over to Neil to talk about the admin side and what that process looked like.
There's a maintenance aspect to this too, right, Neil? Could you maybe speak to-
Yes. This process was also picked up by me from a predecessor and the C A O who was in this position prior to me. And it was partially completed during that time. There were some board members that had approached me that said they were still interested in this, looking at it as an alternative to purchasing because lots of times we don't have the funds to purchase. This is really a department-level request and part of the requirement is showing you have funding available to make these purchases and to make these leases work and that it's a better option for your department than purchasing vehicles. And like Renell just said, they have close to twenty-five vehicles that meet that criteria for replacement at this time, as far as being safe and reliable vehicles. Their department is quite large, as you all know, so they use their vehicles for a lot of different reasons. So, administratively, this came to the board on the twenty-fourth of January. There were master lease agreements that went through the typical process of being reviewed by county council and myself and then came to the board for discussion and approval. Those were approved. They do include a maintenance agreement as well as a lease agreement. They also include agreements to turn the vehicles back over to Enterprise. Like Renell mentioned earlier, that they do have a value and you return them back into Enterprise to either continue the lease or to sell those vehicles. So, we do have somebody online from Enterprise. If you have any questions about the actual program and how all of that works, he's willing to answer questions. And he did send me a text earlier to let you know that he is online. But basically, this is just a process that's an alternative to purchasing vehicles and for vehicles that are for departments that makes sense, to bring that forward as an option. The process comes to myself for review. It goes to our controller for review as far as budget and finances being available. So, those steps have been taken care of already. And today, it's before you have the request of the department and approval recommendation by the purchasing agent, which is myself, after our review.
So, if there's certain years where there's not funding to buy vehicles, say, which totaled to be about a hundred thousand dollars, what's gonna happen on those certain years when we still have to make the hundred thousand dollar a year payment to the leasing company?
What was that again?
So, Renell stated that sometimes there's not funding to buy new vehicles, which equates to about a hundred thousand dollars, correct? And then what happens if that funding is not available to make the lease payment?
Well, actually, I think what she's just said was they typically budget about two vehicles per year, which equals about a hundred thousand dollars. So, they've tried to keep the lease payment about that same amount.
Sometimes that funding's not available?
Well, it's state and federal funding, so it is available. They have funds more available than our general fund departments. And I think it was something, like I said, part of the process is ensuring that you have those funds available for the lease for the term of the lease. Renell, if you want to speak to that?
Just to add a little bit of clarification to that, the statement making that I made about funds not being available, that's often per budget unit. So, we have some funds that are some budget units that don't typically get like capital expenditure funds to purchase a vehicle. By leasing it, we- that comes out of a different line and so we're able to utilize other funding for a lease versus a purchase. And so, what I meant by that is not all funding or budget units have the opportunity to purchase vehicles on a regular basis. So, this affords us that ability to get them reliable cars on a more frequent timeframe.
And I also want to real quick speak to the availability of vehicles. One of the reasons we looked at an alternative to purchasing because, as all you all know, finding vehicles over the past several years has been near impossible. One of our departments was the sheriff's office. They've had vehicles budgeted for three years now. They were finally able to find three vehicles to replace some of the ones that are just, need to be out of service. And so, when looking at this option for leasing, Enterprise also has those vehicles available as well. And same thing with a number of our departments who have been waiting to purchase vehicles and they haven't been able to find them. And so, just with their buying power, they have gone through the process of an R P process through one of our cooperative purchase agreements. So, they're eligible to provide services to the county as well. They've been selected through that process as a leasing agent.
And what's the typical usage and mileage on the vehicles that we currently have? Why are they so unreliable?
That kind of differs by department and the vehicle. We see it more often with general funds and in the past, we just haven't had the funds to replace them. So, typically what we do is have funded departments who have vehicles available, pass them on to general fund departments when they're still reliable and they have low mileage. Really, in the past, over my twenty-three years, there's been situations where, you know, vehicles needed to be replaced long before they were. They just didn't have the funds to do it. So, with the sheriff's department, I think they try to keep them under a hundred thousand miles because it's a code-three vehicle and the use that they get. We've tried to transition a little bit to the trucks this time around because of our off-road pursuits and it's pretty hard on cars and our SUVs as well. And so, that was a recommendation by the sheriff and they were able to find three of those vehicles. But, you know, we do try to look at vehicles that are in the hundred thousand mile range and it also depends on the use. If you're using it for courier and you're just traveling around town, then that's, you know, we can go a lot further than that or a lot more than a hundred thousand miles. But it also depends on the condition and the maintenance. This process and these agreements allow maintenance as well. So, there'll be continued maintenance on these vehicles.
And will they, Enterprise, handle all maintenance? They'll come and service all the vehicles? Or are we still responsible for taking the vehicles to get there, to get serviced?
The process for the maintenance, and I'm sure Renell can speak more to this or Anthony can answer that question on the line, they typically have vendors that are authorized through their company. Locally, of course, we're in Delnart County. A lot of those vendors don't exist here. And so, we're working with local vendors in order to get that figured out. We've given them three options that Health and Human Services usually uses for their maintenance of their vehicles. And so, we're trying to get a local vendor approved on their vendor list to do the maintenance for our vehicles.
If I could just, these are just vehicles that don't require special equipment added, right? So, we're not gonna be doing a fleet operation for the sheriff's department like this because they're- or even agriculture, because they have specific things they need added. We need to modify vehicles.
That's correct. I'm not sure if they do ag vehicles, but Enterprise did say they do code-three vehicles. They do outfit vehicles for long-
They do. I did not know that. Okay.
Yeah, and that's, I've actually done a lot of homework over this last four years on this particular topic. I was one of the people that encouraged Jay Serena, our previous C A O, to take a look at this because in talking with many of the counties that are currently utilizing program and had for the previous ten years, the cost savings and maintenance alone was well worth the contract, in particular for their sheriff's departments, which they do fully equip and outfit those vehicles. And because of the high use in rural areas in particular, it became a massive benefit for them to utilize that Enterprise program for those code-three vehicles.
And that was my concern originally, why I voted no, was on these types of lease agreements that, you know, we focus in on the high utilization vehicles, those that get a lot of daily use or at least get, as opposed to some of the vehicles that H H S and services tend to, where they'll just sit in a lot for weeks on end before they get assigned to someone to go and utilize. And so, they have, they've been in the fleet for five years or six years, but they have very low mileage. Those aren't the ones I would seek, you know, putting on a lethal type of arrangement because we'd be paying for cars to just be sitting, sitting unused in your lots, even though they are, you know, some of these cars are beyond their, in years, but not necessarily in mileage. And their just lack of utilization is what's causing them to be unreliable. When something sits in your lot for weeks or months on end and doesn't get a lot of utilization, you know, it degrades over time. And so, you know, I look at if these leases are gonna be done, that they be vehicles that are in fairly good use or being utilized enough to where it makes economic sense as opposed to just sitting, those that sit in a lot waiting for someone to be assigned to a car.
On that same kind of note, and I can't remember what the number was, but is there not a over-usage penalty in a lease? If you drive too many miles, then you get penalized further? Is that right?
What are you, I'm not following your question.
So, you're saying we should utilize them in high usage? Shouldn't do a lease in low usage because it's a waste of money, it's just sitting there. But we should use it in a high-mileage vehicle that gets the most utilization. But yet, isn't there penalties for over-use on a lease vehicle? If you go over your allotted miles for the year?
Oh, typically, there is a mileage threshold, yes. And I think that's been increased recently. I don't think it was a concern when Renell looked at that as far as the vehicle mileage compared to what they usually use on an annual basis. And over this five-year period, it wasn't a concern.
Okay.
And also to address your question about turning over vehicles that are kind of, go beyond their reliable use, having a program like this does that for us as well. If you're doing a five-year program and turning your vehicles over on a regular basis that are used, you know you're getting reliable vehicles for your employees.
Yeah, I guess I just, if we have the money, we buy a vehicle. If we don't, we don't.
Yeah, we've been fortunate over the past three years, fiscal years, to actually allocate some funds for purchasing vehicles. So, some of our general fund departments who have had vehicles for a long time have been able to replace those. You know, speaking over the past twenty-three years of doing the budget at the county, it's not typically the case where we have additional funds to buy fixed assets. We've had some one-time funds come through COVID and ARPA and other avenues. So, we've been able to actually budget for fixed asset purchases, which allowed us to replace some of those vehicles.
Okay. I'm gonna open this up for public comment on this item. Is there any public comment?
So, I'm trying to take this solid. So, you wanna take two vehicles and lease them for a hundred thousand dollars for one year?
No.
Five years?
No.
Okay.
Four.
Oh, fourteen vehicles. Okay, so the mileage thing is a big deal because you've got nine kids that are out of county that are in the foster care program and once a month, they have to drive down to Sacramento or wherever these kids are for contact visit. So, I don't know if anybody's taken that into consideration and how much miles that rocks up. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this one?
Thank you, board, and thank you for allowing the public to hear this debate. I just had a couple of questions. I guess if this was a hundred thousand dollars, the lease agreement's only like a month old. So, is this hundred thousand for just a quarter of the year or is it for a whole year? And Y Enterprise, I was, you know, they're not local, so we, I see there's a pretty good delivery fee and a local rental company was contacted for request for quote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, Anthony from Enterprise, I believe, has had his hand raised for a while.
Oh, very good. Let's hear from him.
Anthony, you there?
Yeah, I'm sitting here. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me to sit in today. I'm happy to represent and address any of your questions that you have in regards to the leasing as well as the mileage. It is called a lease because it is a slowed finance. So, there is a residual at the end. So, that way, to Renell and Neil's point earlier, there is going to be equity built into that vehicle at term. But there is mileage to continue to run that vehicle if it's particularly low mileage. There is an option to replace that vehicle if it is high mileage. But there is no mileage penalty on the vehicle. We just assess what the forecasted resale value is going to be on that vehicle. So, that way, there is a strong equity gain at the end. And then we always, throughout our discussions with D H H S in an ongoing basis, would provide consult and replacement recommendations based off of either vehicle availability, safety, fuel economy, maintenance, warranties, and also their market position. So, making sure that you're taking advantage of the resale market. So, regardless of if some vehicles go a little bit higher or a little bit lower, that's in our ongoing evaluation of the fleet as a fleet management provider. So, I hope that that addresses some of your questions.
It does. Thank you.
When you say equity, who gets the equity? Because at the end, it's a lease, correct? We don't own it, right? We give it back. So, who's, what equity? What is, what does that mean?
The equity is the county's. So, as an example, if we took a twenty-five- So as an example, if we took a $25,000 vehicle and then we financed it to a $5,000 residual over five years, but that vehicle's worth 10,000 or 15,000 and we sell it in the secondary market for, let's say, $15,000, that equity would then satisfy the remaining balance of 5,000. And then the $10,000 gain or proceeds would go to the county for use as they see fit, whether they want to use that in a different project or they want to use it to pay down another lease or they want to use it to replace the vehicle. So it's, it's, you are the, we're the title holder as the vehicle's being financed, but the county is the registered end user, so therefore you get 100% ownership of the resale proceeds.
Okay. Any other questions from board members?
If you have any questions, I'm sorry.
I, yeah, I think so. And then as far as, so we make lease payments and then the maintenance, we are responsible for getting it to the location and maintaining at certain checkpoints? Or you have somebody that oversees the whole, all the vehicles and upkeeps them for us? Or are we just, is this basically just financing the vehicle?
They're financing the vehicle, but there is also a maintenance program included, which would include anything preventative or non-preventative on the vehicle. As Neil had alluded to, we're working with some of your local vendors that you're already working to, that you already outsource your maintenance to, to add them to our network for our direct billing, our diagnostic and our interval tracking software. We've already started engaging with them. So how that would work is either if they're a mobile vendor that can do it onsite, then they could just fill Enterprise directly. Otherwise, if they are not able to do onsite, then it would be really no change to the current process today. But we do have the ability to see preventative maintenance tracking as well as forecasted mileage trend through each transaction from a maintenance standpoint. So that way, the vehicles are safe and compliant on an ongoing basis. And, and again, Enterprise would, would cover, would cover anything maintenance related outside of warranty.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for chiming in. Appreciate you answering the questions for us. With the absence of any other questions.
I'm making a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Public comment has been heard. Kylie, will you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
No.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Okay, item number 14, receive a juvenile hall update by the Chief Probation Officer. Chief Raymond.
Good morning.
I will try and be brief. In the last four weeks or so, essentially what we've done as far as planning for a transition from juvenile hall to a re-entry team is create kind of three, three different big categories. First being personnel, and that surrounds HR, transition for staff, things like that. In that respect, we've met with county administration, HR, the auditor, and started working through some of the issues surrounding job description, pay scale, things like that, nailing down details of that. Once we finalize that, which hopefully is, my team can wrap that up this week and we'll have another conversation, either email or meeting with county admin. We'll get together with the union and start those conversations on what that looks like in respect to those job descriptions, that transition process, things like that. The other two big categories that we are dealing with are programs and operations and the facilities. I've had several meetings with my management team and a couple supervisors. I'm planning on incorporating staff into that too, but we have had some discussions with the union on making sure that we don't cross any boundaries there. And so we're working that process through and by next week, we should have staff integrated into that process for planning as well. Programs and operations, we're looking at what a schedule for a, lack of a better term right now, we're generically calling it a probation youth center. What a schedule would be like for that, when we can plug in programs for youth based on requirements that we would have for maintaining transportation for youth in custody for court, working around court calendars, school schedules, things like that, what would actually work best to have kids come in and receive programming. So scheduling is a part of it. What programs are plugged into that is a big piece. We have some of those internally that we're already doing and plan to continue. The Paxton Patterson Program, which is a building skills program that we're doing, our CBT journaling groups that we're doing. My program coordinator, she does moral recognition therapy, seeking safety, which is a one-on-one program when that comes up with kids with trauma, things like that. So we're looking at when those might be plugged in, but we're also trying to make connections with other agencies. And so Jordan Anderson, my facility manager, he's already put together an email and sent that out to 10-plus different agencies and groups as we grabbed those emails, made phone calls. And we're trying to set up some initial contacts to talk with them about what the idea is, what they might bring to the table, and then start to flesh that out in larger conversations as we find folks that are willing to jump in and, and bring something to the table for the kids. Had some initial conversations with child welfare as well and plan on meeting with behavioral health. So Director Brown and her team will get that done as well because they're already providing programs for kids through the mental health department, behavioral health department. So we want to see if that is a fit for the youth center or if that's something they're going to continue to operate outside and start to parse out what that looks like. What would come in and be facilitated out of the center? What would continue to be facilitated in the community? And try and avoid any overlapping programs that are already offered someplace else. So programs and operations is probably the biggest conversation we've had so far. Eligibility for services as well. Primarily, this is for probation youth. So in, both informal probation, we have youth that are on informal and usually those are six months, month periods of time, agreements with the youth and their families, with us. And we would like to incorporate them into these programs and have that as an opportunity for them to participate in as well as our youth on formal probation. The programs that we already do and would do would be operated out of, out of the center. We're also looking at what other, you know, at-risk is a big term. So we've had some initial discussions on what that is and how we can wrap our arms around it without getting too broad. We've looked at the 601 code section and Welfare and Institutions Code talks about a lot of status offenses. So you have runaways that would fall under that, youth with behavioral issues that don't rise to criminal levels, but the way statute says is they're out of control. I think defiant might be thrown in there as well. Truancy issues are found in 601. So that, as it already exists, we think is a good starting point, at least, to have those conversations and see how we can integrate those youth in. Happens somewhat rarely, but over the years, we've had parents call and say, my kid's out of control. What can probation do? Typically, we've not been able to do a whole lot, but looking at it through this lens with this resource available, we might be able to bring those families in. And if we get participation with those kids and those families, integrate them into these programs and make those available as well, connect them with resources. I hit most of those points. Last big category is facilities, the building itself. What needs to be done to make it viable to actually pass through and use the facility? What areas of the facility we would use for different projects, programs? What area of the facility we need to maintain as a secure custody side for those intakes that we're doing, transports, temporary custody, things like that? Jordan Anderson, he's already run in point on a lot of those things, reaching out, talking to building maintenance about some modifications we might be able to make, talking to other counties about how they've managed their juvenile halls, mechanically speaking, facility-wise, that might make it a little bit easier to transition, yet have that capability of going back, so non-destructive essentially, going back to a secure institution in the future if that is what needs to happen. So we've conducted a walkthrough with my management and supervisor team, sketching out initial ideas on what that facility would look like as far as where folks would end up and what would need to happen to make that viable. So generally speaking, that's where we're at. Again, my, my hope, June 30th, I suppose you could call it a hope, not sure that we'll have an idea of what that timeline will actually be. That's what we're trying to shoot for and use that as some, some fog lines on the road to try and get there. Probably have a better idea next month on a more firm timeline on what we're looking at. So that's what I've got for you now.
Very good. Thank you, Chief Raymond. Any questions?
I have a lot of questions. Thank you for this. The, how many, how many youth are currently on probation with any, with 654, formal probation, that sort of thing? What's your total? I looked in the thing that you sent last night.
I think we're right around mid twenties.
Mid twenties currently on probation?
Yes.
I mean, I, I think that we need to really kind of have this conversation. Like, is, is keeping a full-on juvenile facility for 20 youth that need services really something? Maybe, I mean, that's, I just want to kind of put that out there to have a whole facility. What I want to talk about though as well is, tell me what it's going to look like. So if a youth is being arrested on a Friday night, right? The, the law enforcement, sheriff or the CCPD or CHP want to book that kid into custody. Tell, tell me what that's going to look like from probation's end? What, what does that officer do with that kid?
Essentially the same thing that we're doing now and we have always done. So if they have an arrest that they've made, the conversations I've had with my staff and also leading, it was a good forum to talk to that, talk to that point with other administrators. But our on-call protocol has been set for quite a few years. So if it's a felony offense, bring them and we will take custody and process them.
And you process them and then what happens to them? Because, I mean, if we, you know, suspend, I don't know what the language is. We're not going to terminate it completely, but if we suspend operations, can you still hold a youth in custody in your booking area? Is, that's allowed?
Yes.
Okay, for how long?
So temporary custody lasts for six hours according to statute. I think our typical timeline has been two, at the most, three hours that we've had that
Because then you get your transportation team in. Get them transferred to either Humboldt or Shasta.
Correct. Humboldt primarily, Shasta if we have to. And part of this process is talking to some other counties about other redundant contracts in case we end up with population issues or travel issues, road goes out, a pass is shut down, something like that.
Okay.
But yeah, essentially any felony we'll take custody of and process. Misdemeanors, when they involve violence, we will take those as well. Other misdemeanors, we typically push back on and we really want those arresting agencies to see if they can find someplace safe for that kid to go. And occasionally that gives rise to some interesting conversations, but we navigate through those. And so that process is going to remain the same. Once they come in, we'll process them with the detention risk assessment. Do that, use that instrument to determine whether we are going to hold on and detain them or whether we can release them, either without restriction on GPS. And then we get those reports that goes through the normal referral process to get them in front of the judge. But as far as the custody goes, they'll come in, we'll hold on to them, do that assessment and figure out where they need to go and then transport out if they require custody.
Okay, perfect. And so, but that's exactly, you're just following that same formula, that same instrument that you, you said. So one thing that you didn't bring up, and it's probably because it's premature and we won't know for till Thursday, we have the potential to get a very large grant that's going to help us with some youth services, one of which could be, we haven't really identified it yet, I don't even know if I'll be part of the planning process on it, but is cooling beds. So I, and I just want to just put that out there so the other board members can know too, that with the closure of juvenile hall, let's say that somebody gets booked into custody or, or needs to be booked in, whether it be a straight-up felony or a misdemeanor with violence. If we have these cooling beds, it would mean that we would have ability to place those kids someplace in the community, like a, a high-end foster care kind of system. So I just, I want to say that there are things in motion to kind of supplement what it is that with the closure or suspension of juvenile hall, that there are going to be other options that we can move this forward. And I also just want to say to the community as well that, you know, while this is the decision that was made, but we still are looking to make sure that we're providing the best services that we can for our youth as well as our community.
Yes, absolutely. I, I think in reality, much of our process for detention is going to remain the same. If we can release a kid and we have that possibility and ability, then we, we do already. If they need detained, to be detained, then we do that. Cooling beds, I think, is a fabulous idea. I'm not sure, when it comes to that middle-of-the-night, you know, arrest and call, I'm not sure that that's going to be the place we'll see the most use out of it, but I think there are plenty of kids in our community, both that touch our side on juvenile justice side as well as the child welfare side. I think there could be a, a lot of benefit coming from something like that to provide a safe place for those kids.
And then my, my last point, and I know I've made it and I just want to publicly make it too, is that if we need stakeholders and ad hoc groups, stakeholders somewhere where we are getting buy-in from a lot of the community partners on what it's going to look like, because we're reimagining something that, yeah, other communities have done, but we necessarily haven't. So I want to put that out there again, that I would not be opposed and I'm actually highly encouraging for us to have some sort of ad hoc stakeholder group that reimagines what the juvenile services are going to look like.
And I do intend on bringing those stakeholders together. I think I would like to have staff input and some buy-in there and an idea particularly from them on what that looks like on a day-to-day basis so that when we do convene that, we can have some intelligent conversations around what our capabilities and, and resources are and how we can match those things, both the vision with the ability to, to reach that too.
Thank you, Chief. Is there any other comments from the Chief?
I just have kind of a quick little thing to say, I guess, and ask maybe. Is it, you know, the, the discussion of closing juvenile hall is, was a, a big one and it came across as a negative. But we, you know, we're technically still able to take kids in, we're still able to get them, you know, where they need to be. So would it be more of an appropriate statement to say not necessarily the closing of juvenile hall, but it's more of a restructuring of juvenile hall? Like, moving forward, we, we are restructuring the way juvenile hall works, which is a positive.
I, I think it's fair. It, it's, like you said, it's a very difficult conversation because we are losing a resource out of our community to be able to detain youth here locally, to have that available both for the courts, for the families, for the kids. But at the same time, as I've stated, I think, I think we need to play offense. I think we need to, to reimagine, take a look at what we've got and what we can do and approach the problem a little bit differently. And I think we can have good outcomes out of that. It's not by any means going to be easy and it's not necessarily a, a fun process, but I think we can take it and make something good come of it, definitely.
Yeah, for myself, I just wanted to reiterate that nobody, at least for myself, I, I did not make this decision going forward because it was, it was a good choice. It was reality and it was the unfortunate reality that not only is Delnort County facing, but many other counties are facing the same, same issue. And when I've faced these kinds of problems going forward, you know, you look towards those that have, have dealt with this situation, you find best practices and then we, we go forward again. And so I encourage you to have those stakeholder meetings and seeking out advice elsewhere because again, these are not new roads. These are roads that have already been, been plowed and, you know, we put off a, a, a poor choice for as long as you had because we wanted to maintain what we did have to have. But unfortunately, reality was such that, you know, it was just impossible to keep going forward in the same vein, but we can at least find the best way forward. Thank you.
Appreciate those comments. And thank you, Chief, for the update.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this presentation by the Chief?
Hello.
Good morning.
Norma Williams, Chapter President, Delnort County Employees Association, SEIU 1021.
Norma Williams, Chapter President, Delnor County Employees Association, SEIU 1021. Yeah, in terms of moving forward, obviously, as the Chief had briefly mentioned, there was some issues that had been brought up and were under discussion. I did meet with the Chief here not too long ago and I believe that misunderstanding has been cleared up. And so I think as far, as long as those areas which we govern and oversee is not treaded upon and respected, I think the union has no, no further issues at this time. It is important, obviously, that staff have a buy-in as to what's going to be happening with however you name this facility, because they're going to be the ones, at least for those who remain, are going to be working and doing the job. However, again, as I did point out to the Chief, by and large, the whole staff is still waiting. We're still waiting to meet and confer with them on the actual impact of closing the hall as a, as a custodial, a true custodial facility. As he mentioned, we're going to be looking at losing four people. Well, I've got a couple of them now wondering what's happening. And I have to basically say, no, nothing yet, and that's not satisfactory and it's understandable. If you were one of the people possibly facing a layoff, you would want to know as soon as possible, particularly since options begin to close as the so-called tentative closure date comes closer and closer. In the end, I agree, I think changing the facility, if maybe as you decided, is necessary, then I do agree that I think developing programs that will be targeted for youth in trouble, youth who faced trouble with, with the courts is important. Something that my son told me still weighs on me, and that is when he heard about the closure, he said, "Mom, you're basically, they're basically sending a signal that these kids aren't worth it, that you're basically throwing them away." And I think what's happening now and what should go forward and what should everyone keep in mind is that the signal that needs to be sent by the commu, by the county, by probation, is that these kids are not being thrown away, that they are still going to be invested in and in a positive way, so that they can maybe make some positive changes in their lives and not have to go, keep going back and getting into trouble to where they may wind up in an adult prison. They are our future, whether they're in trouble or not, we need to do everything that we can to support them and give them that chance. And as a union leader, as a mom, as a community member, I'm in support of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Norma. Seeing no other public comment, we'll move on down the agenda to item number 15. Discuss and give possible direction to staff to clear vegetation on county property adjacent to the east side of the Walmart parcel so it is more visible as requested by Supervisor Starkey.
Hi, yes, thank you. I just broke my little button on my mic, so I apologize to IT. So I am asking for this, there's a couple of things. We did a cleanup there on March 25th. It was a part of the Clean California Act and we chose Walmart because they had approached the sheriff recently about a lot of the theft that they have going out of the Walmart store. And they did their inventory and $1.8 million worth of items, merchandise, has been stolen out of Walmart this last year. And one of the ways in which I feel we can be good community partners is to maintain the, the vegetation that we have over bordering that area. So I had put it on because I just kind of wanted to have staff direction. I didn't intend for it to be on for a full-on discussion like this, however it is. And what, in speaking with the building maintenance director or department head, he indicated that it would require, you know, getting certain permits from the, because of, I think it's the snowy plover, or the clover, it's some sort of animal. And so you have to have...
Yeah, snowy plover.
Is it called a clover?
It is a clover, yeah.
Yeah. Well, when he did it for the front end of the parking lot, which is wonderful, and when we were doing our trash pickup, which we, we took out 1,600 pounds of trash just in the three-hour period we were there, the front part was not nearly as bad because the vegetation was up and people don't tend to sit and, and want to go into areas where they can be seen. And so I'm just asking that we work to whatever it needs to be done, whether it be permits or, or because it's going to require more staff time than just some of the normal functions, I would just like for us to be good neighbors to Walmart and see if we can't get that visibility cleared up.
Well, I, I support this and I just wanted to say that from the previous effort, from a fire department perspective, once that was cleared up, that understory was taken out, we, our responses just shifted. We didn't go to that place anymore. We just kind of moved back into where the, the woods could conceal the activity, you know, a little bit further back. So if, if we can find a way for our staff to, to do this activity, I think it'd be a, a healthy thing.
Well, I, I too see the benefit of it and more importantly, I'd make a motion to approve it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I was hoping to hear from Alan, though. I don't know what...
He's online.
Is he online? Okay. My, my only concern is, you know, we have stuff on our plates and I don't know what his priorities are and where we would prioritize this for him. So Alan, if you're listening in, could you speak to that? Is this a doable project for you and what would be the timeframe?
Oh, can you guys all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, this is absolutely something that we can do. I was going to say, especially since we are, we'll be getting a storm crew from the last declaration, federal declaration, that will be able to take up and deal with a lot of the day-to-day stuff that we have to do with cutting grass and maintaining our other parks. We can actually use these folks to come in and help as well. Gives them great training, we learn a lot about them. I'd say I, I think it's a great project. Say, we've done, we've done two of these so far and both of them have turned out to be very easy for us to maintain. We dealt, we don't have to worry about the neighbors having issues with the homeless at that, those parts, points anymore. And yeah, I think we can get this pretty quickly done. There, there may be a little confusion as it relates to the permitting process. The permitting process isn't really a permitting process. What I do is I call up a couple of people I know at the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. They come out, they kind of do a quick assessment of the property. They'll give me some guidelines of, hey, don't do this during this times of the year, don't do this during this times of the year. Other than that, you guys are good to go. And that, and that would be basically the permitting process, is making sure Fish and Wildlife is on board with what we're doing and how we're doing it.
Very good, Alan. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm going to open this item up for public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. Kylie, would you pull the vote?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair short.
Yes. Okay. Item 16, approve and authorize the use and waiver of all fees associated with the use of Florence Keller Park's large picnic area to take part in the Forest Moon Festival taking place June 2nd, 2023 for the movie showing in the redwoods event. And two, allow minimal county staff time to ensure power for the event as requested by Supervisor Starkey.
So one of the events that is coming up, and it's the 40th anniversary for the Return of the Jedi, which was filmed in Portion here in Delnor County. And we are, with the Humboldt-Delnor Film Commission, we have an opportunity for them to bring up their movie screen, for them to provide the staffing, the sound system for it, for us to show a movie. There, there was a little bit of a hiccup last night where perhaps because this is, is turning out to be somewhat a very highly advertised event and we are having a lot of interest in it, that Florence Keller may be too small. But we are hoping that, I mean, yeah, 750 people is what they're estimating now, which is going to be too small for Florence Keller. But what I would like to do is if the board would approve, is for us to use this as an option to move forward with it today. They have costumers coming, I mean, we're getting contacted by storm troopers all over the region. This is a huge deal and it's really a potential to do something fun for our community. So I just, I think it's a perfect location in Florence Keller Park, surrounded by the redwoods, and we are underutilizing the beauty of that park and Alan does such an amazing job keeping the upkeep on that. So anyway, I, I just put it on because I would, you know, like to have the, the $150 fee rental waived and then we would need some minimal staff to ensure that we had power to the event. So that is the request.
Excellent. Glad you brought this to our attention. I'd definitely move to approve and authorize that waiver. And then in addition, as item number two says, allow that minimal staff time.
Thank you for that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back. Kylie, would you pull the vote?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair short.
Yes. Yeah, it's probably true. Yeah, it's going to be a big event. Okay, moving on to budget transfers. We have item number 17, approve and adopt the transfer 03-05, excuse me, for fiscal year 2223 within a capital improvement budget in the amount of $96,424 to allow for the expenditure of funds for the Delnor County Recreation Gym Reroute Project. Item 18 is budget transfer 03-06 in the amount of $2,200 within the agricultural budget unit to allow the payment of device administrative fees for fiscal year 2122 and 2223. And we also have transfer 04-01 in the amount of $36,000 within the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Budget Unit for fixed asset purchases of two portable electronic signs and two mobile incident command centers.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second to approve these budget transfers. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, bring it back. Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair short.
Yes. At this time, I'm going to take a short break for about five minutes. We'll reconvene at 11:44. We can continue the meeting. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number 20, is approve and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the attached support letters for increased funding to the Senate Budget Subcommittee Number One and Assembly Budget Subcommittee Number Three to revise state budgeting methodology for CalFresh and to increase the general fund to provide additional funding for disaster preparedness and response as requested by the Director of Health and Human Services. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing no public, oh, yep, come, come right on.
I see this is coming from the general fund, but we also have a couple other food funds. And I was just wondering if we could distinguish why we have so many separate different ones and how this is differentiated out of the general fund into CalFresh. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, bring it back to the board.
I'll move to the board.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair short.
Yes. Okay, now we'll move on to our fiscal year 2223 budget workshop, which is actually a presentation for the Community Development Department. Heidi, welcome.
Thank you for allowing me to give my presentation this morning. Hopefully it will not be too long. Our first slide here is our Welcome to the Community Development Department's Budget for next year. Does this work? Just roll? Oh, 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 yeah, the roll. Oh, oh, no, I'm going the wrong direction. Okay. Is there any way to make it so I could use the pointer because if, no.
Next slide.
Oh, Dan gets to do that for me. All right. Next slide, please. Okay, this is the mission for the Community Development Department. Our mission is to serve the people of Delnor County. Our mission is to serve the people of Del Norte County by providing a customer-focused process for the orderly development of real property balanced in resource stewardship under the general policy direction of the Board of Supervisors, and to develop and maintain standards that protect the health and safety of the public. Next slide, please. This is the general organization of our department, which includes two branches, six divisions, and 37 positions allocated. Next slide, please. We begin with the Public Works Branch, which is comprised of two divisions, which is our Engineering and Surveying Division and our Roads Division. The Public Works Branch is primarily funded through the Road Fund, which is not the subject of today's meeting, but there is an element of their funding that is general fund, which is Budget Unit 101183. Also afterwards, I will email all of you this, if you'd like a copy or if you'd like me to post it on CDD's webpage. So the general fund, Budget 101183, and this is to be used for funds that are non-road fund-related, so non- not related to the maintenance of county roads. The goal of the Engineering and Surveying Division is to administer and implement civil engineering projects for various county organizations, providing engineering consultation on projects related to roads, bridges, drainage, flood control, bicycle and pedestrian pathways, and stream restoration. Several of their objectives include reviewing encroachment permits and plans, as well as where this fiscal year or next fiscal year are going to begin implementing a permitting program for encroachment permits and grading permits. There are other functions that these folks carry out, but they are funded through other sources. Next slide, please. I know this is from the current fiscal year, but I'm showing these because we have not prepared our fiscal year 2324 budget, but expect it to be very similar. What you see, we have professional services in the amount of $20,000. Those are funds that we keep available if we have a conflict of interest with our county surveyor, which we have had in the past because he does property development. Also, the inter-fund roads, those are the reimbursement funds, so when our engineering staff does, for example, assist other departments in providing technical assistance related to engineering, if those departments don't have funds to reimburse them, this is where that would come from. Next slide, please. For the next fiscal year, we've identified a few needs. The first would be able, primary would be able to maintain the funding that we've had for the last current year, to be able to add some funding for software that we need for reviewing our record of surveys. And then the third is now that we have a full-time county engineer in that position filled, we may need to increase the inter-fund or we will need to increase the inter-fund roads allocation, but we have really good accounting information from the time that he's been here in order to account for how much that increase would be. Next slide, please.
Can I just ask a quick question on that?
Yeah.
Because I'll forget when I come back.
Actually, that would be a really great idea, because, and I forgot to ask, would you like, at the end of each division, to stop and ask questions?
That's my only, the question is the inter-fund thing. Isn't that like a two-year-out thing? Isn't... Okay, so that's the cost plan?
No.
That is, like, we pay for that two years?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, all right, so the increase to the inter-fund from 205 to...
Yeah.
Is that, that's a current kind of real-time consideration?
Yeah, in this case, I mean, for, like, John started working at the beginning of the second quarter, so we have no first-quarter expenses. So like, right now, we're doing great, and we're probably gonna be fine at 205, 205 or what we had allocated, but we really need to look at, you know, the months that he has been there and on average, how much he's spent to make sure that, because this is not a line item, we would want to go over because, well, we don't want to go over on any line item, but this would, this is pretty critical for our department. You're welcome. Okay, so now we're moving on to the Development Services Branch, which is primarily our general fund divisions. Many of you are familiar with those. That would be our Building Division, Code Enforcement, Planning, and Environmental Health. Next slide, please. We began with the Planning Division. As far as allocated positions, we have two planners, which both of those positions are filled. One secretary, which is 50% assigned to the division, is currently vacant, but we will be doing interviews this week. One of the two planner positions is funded by Measure R. The goal of the division is to ensure the development of a well-planned and balanced and sustainable county. We list a few of our objectives. One being being able to help the public in a timely manner, I believe that's to be able to give information, to maintain our Surface Mining and Reclamation Act program, so mining permits, to be able to make progress on the grants that we have with the California Department of Housing and Community Development. We have a grant from the Coastal Conservancy for Camp Park. And then lastly, I've listed, to submit the annual general plan, annual, or progress report to the state. Something that's not on there is also to be able to comply with the implementation programs from our housing element, recent update. Next slide, please.
Heidi, the secretary, where does the other 50%?
The other 50% goes to code enforcement.
So still in your, okay, under your umbrella?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so our Planning Division budget, based on our currently adopted budget, most of it goes to services and supplies, which are actually consultant services that are reimbursable fully through grants, which you'll see on the next slide when we get there as far as reimbursements. We have a charge for $90,000. That's a reimbursable to the city of Crescent City that's related to a grant. We also have 71% in our intra-fund, in inter-fund transfers, is going to departments to provide services, and you'll probably hear about this in Dan's presentation. One of the exciting things has to do with our REAP grant, but I'll let him go over that one. Next slide, please. Okay, so for revenues, our adopted revenues are 687, 655, predominantly though they are from the grant activity, which you'll see, it's kind of hard to see, but a lot of the grant reimbursements offset our cost, which is ideal, because we are always looking to save money when possible. Again, mentioning the Measure R, can't mention that enough. Thank you for your board and the public for supporting that. It helps us have that second planner, which is a really huge to our department. One of the things that was mentioned in the memo that we were, you know, kind of giving some guidelines or, you know, some hints how to go about this, was also to bring out things that may not necessarily be going so great. And, for example, our planning revenue is not fantastic this fiscal year. It's always hard to figure out what it's going to be. You don't know what projects are gonna come in and out. This happens to be a particularly bad year, which means probably for fiscal year 2324, we're probably gonna be having revenues that are projecting less than usual. Just putting that out there. Next slide, please. Okay, so for our needs for fiscal year 202324, obviously continued funding for our staff. We'd also like to add geographic information system ability for our second planner. We were able to get that last year for one of our planners, and it's very helpful. We'd like to get handheld tablets for document data, which we could use in the field to capture data, to take photos, and then also to assist people at the public, at the public counter. Also looking at potentially a subscription to the California Natural Diversity Base, which is available through California Department of Fish and Wildlife. A lot of the properties that we're looking at these days are becoming more and more likely to have sensitive habitat, and having this information at our desktop allows us to get a better idea. Not that visiting the field and getting in-person is not valuable, but this is really helpful or would be helpful for us. And then the last item, which is still kind of in flux, I just put it in there, has to do with the update of the general plan and any of that, but that's a longer-term thing and, you know, can be discussed separately. Just let you know that we do have 137,550 in a maintenance fund to date for that future effort.
Do you roll that over every year?
Yeah, it's, yes, it's in a separate dedicated fund, so yes.
Do we add to it every year?
Yes, well, actually, we add to it every time we make a deposit. There's a small fee that goes along with each building permit based on the valuation, so when our account clerk makes our deposits each week, that amount is separately deposited into that fund.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, our next division is the Building Inspection Division. We have two building, a building official slash senior inspector and a building inspector. Both of those positions are filled. We have an account clerk position, which is funded 50% through this division. The second 50% of that is shared with environmental health. We have relied upon some extra help, temporary extra help over the past year, which has been extremely helpful, especially with a lot of newer staff in our department, being able to have some continuity and to back up. The goal of the division is to ensure the health and welfare of the county citizens by regulating the construction use and occupancy of buildings. Our two primary objectives in focus rolling on public service, making sure that we're processing our permits in a timely manner and able to do our inspections in a timely manner as well. It's super important to keep things moving out there in the field. It's also important for inspectors to have the training that they need. The state updates the state building code every three years, as well as legislative changes that happen annually, and so there's a lot to keep up on. We will have, one really positive thing that's happening is this permit software, which your board approved several months back, and that information technology is assisting us with, which will be hopefully going online in the next fiscal year. So, next slide, please. Okay, this is our expenditures for this year. In this particular division, the majority are for salaries. We were able to purchase a new vehicle for the division, which now, at this point, we have two very new vehicles, and so we're gonna be good for, hopefully, a really good long time. As far as what we have spent this year, we're on target. Next slide, please. Okay, as far as our revenues, we're doing really well. As far as construction permit activity, we're at 81%, so we're just past the end of the third quarter, so that's, that's a plus. I see us for our next fiscal year projecting a similar amount, and hopefully we'll attain that as well. And this is something I don't need to necessarily get into the details here, but I've added some additional information about where some of these monies go that we receive and then pass through. It's, it's kind of interesting, but maybe not for everyone. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so our needs for fiscal year 2324, again, continued staffing, and we would like to keep the $12,000 in our budget for part-time temporary. This is no surprise that all county departments probably have highs and lows as far as people leaving, people coming, and by having this particular person available, position filled or available to us, it just helps whenever we lose a person, and then there's just a lot of activity at our counter, the phones, email, et cetera. So it's extremely valuable, and it, we have it parked in this division, but really, it could be in any division because this person is gonna, you know, helps where needed, when needed. Now that we will be having this new permit software, I think we're gonna be covered, hopefully, for the next fiscal year through our grant funds for paying for it, so maybe this is kind of too early to be bringing that up, but it is gonna be a cost down the road, but I think one well worth it. And we were very, I don't want to say free will, because that makes us sound cheap, but I think we chose a vendor that was fairly reasonable, just for this very purpose, knowing that we were gonna have these ongoing costs. And then the last items have to do with having a communications, this will be in our next year's budget, that we'll probably have to increase the communications budget because the tablets that they'll be using to do the inspections in the field will hopefully have some real-time capabilities, but we'll be coordinating with Dan on all of that. And then also this Blue Beam software, which allows to do electronic plan checks in the office. We do have grant funding to pay for that, probably for this year and next year, though. Next slide, please. Moving on, Environmental Health Division. We have an senior environmental health specialist in, sorry, I'm sorry, I have a lot of divisions.
No, this is, yeah, this is good.
An environmental health specialist, and then the one at count clerk, which is 50% funded, shared with building inspection. The goal of the vision is to protect the health, safety of the county citizens with regard to environmental factors. Let's see, I'm gonna try to cruise through this. So as far as goals and objectives, we have a lot of really good objectives that we actually have them year after year, nothing especially new. We have to maintain status with the state with regard to how we do maintenance or enforcement for our, what am I trying to say, landfills, transfer stations, et cetera, also for our Certified Unified Program Agency, which is our hazardous materials. Our employee, our two environmental health specialists have to have a registration, and that has to be maintained, requires continuing education, so that's very important for them to have funding for that, although a lot of their education is, can be covered through scholarships. It's pretty neat that they have that opportunity available to them, because most divisions do not. We also have our pesticide storage area, which many of you may be aware of out at the Ag Department. It has finally tested clean, to the point where the California Department of Toxic Control Substances and the federal U.S. EPA have given us the green light to do the closure plan. We hope to do the closure plan by the end of this fiscal year, and the next fiscal year, we would want to implement it, so we're gonna have to, which would involve destroying the monitoring wells that are out there. I don't know what else beyond that, but I believe that that's the key component of it. Also, we had SB 552 from several years back that requires each city or county to establish a county drought and water storage task force. We've been following all of the efforts of the Department of Water Resources to try to streamline that and to provide as much guidance as possible to jurisdictions, but that's something we're gonna be moving forward to the board in the next fiscal year, or even maybe somewhat this year, not sure. It'll probably first begin at our, I always get the acronym wrong, it used to be the Natural Resources Goal Committee, but now it's the something-something TAC meeting, so more to come on that. Next slide, please. Okay, Environmental Health Budget. The majority are, is from salaries and benefits. This year, actually, today, we are picking up a new truck. That was actually paid for entirely from the Cooper Forum Trust as grant funds, so it's pretty exciting. So we will be surplusing a 2007 Chevy Colorado. Any interested county departments, come and give us a call. Let's see here, and I think this is really important, I don't know if all of you are aware of this, but in our Services and Supplies Budget, we have a very large budget for memberships, and that's predominantly, roughly $8,300 of that, is to prepare for, or to pay for a membership in, I'm gonna get it wrong here, the Humboldt-DelNorte Hazardous Materials Response Authority, which allows us 24-hour access to a hazardous materials response team. They use the funds that they collect from all of the members in order to provide training and to have equipment and all of those good things. And I know that there have been occasions where our community has relied upon them, so it's a, it's a really important thing to have in our budget. Also, as far as expenditures, we have money that we have to allocate toward the pesticide storage area Superfund Site. Every time we send a report to the California Department of Toxic and Control Substances, we end up getting a very large bill. So hopefully, when we get this whole thing resolved, that's gonna be something that's gonna disappear, and we're gonna be very happy. Next slide, please. Revenues. Okay, so our pri, the environmental health was transferred to our department in 2010, and it previously was at the Department of Health and Human Services. So the goal through budgeting has been to have the division have a net zero cost to the county's budget. Thankfully, and gratefully, the Department of Health and Human Services has transferred state realignment funds to help offset those costs on an annual basis. It's still up to us as much as to find outside funding for the division in order to reduce any burden on them. So again, we're very grateful for that, that, you know, there are some things that we are looking at as far as trying to help make that a lower amount. As you can see, for this fiscal year, it was $322,363. We do get an annual grant from We do get an annual grant from CalRecycle, roughly fifteen thousand, seven hundred, which helps implement the L E A program. And then, in this particular budget, we have sixty-nine thousand, five forty-five, which is that grant for the, that paid for the truck, as well as some tablets for the division. Next slide please. Our, our needs for next year would be continuing the funding for our current employees, planning for the pesticide storage area superfund site closures, I mentioned. Now that we're going to have this new truck, which is going to be dedicated primarily for haz, we're going to call it our hazmat truck, that we would have some materials in it, not necessarily that we're going to be, you know, taking calls to clean up things, but if, you know, there are some simple things that we come upon, it would be nice to have the equipment. There's a likely chance that we're going to be able to find outside funding for that, but if we aren't, we may be wanting to put some money in for that, but we'll be able to figure that one out fairly quick. Likewise, with that S B five-fifty-two and implementation and the preparation of the plan, it's likely that the state's going to be ponying up some funds for that, which we're going to be looking at. But if not, then we may be looking towards support from the board. Next slide please. Okay, code enforcement office, division. Okay, we have two code enforcement officers. One of the positions is funded by Measure R. Again, thank you to Measure R and the public for supporting that. We have the one secretary position, which is dedicated fifty percent. Again, that one is the one that is under recruitment, hopefully will be refilled in the next few weeks. The goal of the division is to preserve and where possible, enhance the appearance and stability of our community through diligent enforcement of codes, applicable ordinances, and land use regulations. Our objectives are pretty much not unique to this particular year, the ones that we carry forward every year, following the policy of the board, continuing with the A V A requirements, abandoned vehicle abatement, making sure that our officers have the education that they need to, you know, be standing on the laws and safety and all of those good things. And then, when possible, to be able to pursue grants. And I think many of you probably recall, just in the last couple of months, we applied for a CalRecycle grant for nuisance abatement. Next slide please. Okay, so, for this particular division, similar to environmental health, it's predominantly salaries. We do have funds that are dedicated for professional services this year, it's twenty thousand dollars. We also have the fifty thousand dollars that was transferred into this division for the union, or South Bend Union cleanup, so that it, that's why it appears to be a larger. So, if that does not happen this fiscal year, then obviously that, that money, I guess, I guess we'll talk about that during.
Has that been, has that been spent, allocated?
No. It's been, it's been allocated, but not a penny's been spent.
Okay.
No, so we'll probably talk about that during the budget meetings that we hold with the budget team. Next slide please. Okay, our revenues. The public nuisance division itself doesn't bring in a lot of revenues. In this particular case, what we have is a Measure R, which offsets the, the salaries and benefits for the one position. We did transfer ten thousand dollars from our lien repayment fund this year. For the most part, any types of lien repayments that we have from prior abatements are deposited into, into a lien repayment fund, which is a revolving fund that is available. Next slide please. Okay, this is probably our, our neediest division, so saving it for close to last. One, continued funding for full staffing, the purchase of one four-wheel drive vehicle. The staff has a two thousand and seven Ford Ranger, and then also a loaned two thousand and seven Ford F-one-fifty, so we would want to replace one of them. And, you know, after hearing the discussion today, and I, I don't know if I heard, if, like financing and, I don't want, I don't think we're interested in leasing, but if there was possible to finance, because we, we like to care, we like to hold on to our vehicles for a while in C D D. I mean, we're, we're sort of fortunate because we have the roads division who is available for us for maintenance, so it's, it makes sense, and we tend to be in places where sometimes things might get a little, I don't know, where we might not be able to return a car in perfect condition, whereas if we, you know, yeah, yeah, okay. I'm not looking at any particular supervisors. Okay, this is a really wish list kind of thing, but for our professional services, it would be great if we could double it. I know we do have the lien repayment fund, but it, and it has a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in it, but if anyone's been out to Waldo Street or some of those areas, if we were directed to do that, that would clean out that fund. This is our day-to-day money, and with two enforcement officers, I mean, it, it's twenty thousand dollars doesn't go very far, not that we're not grateful for it, because we are, it could be worse, we could get less, obviously, but just a little plug that if, if there is more money available, possibly, we would love to receive some of it. And then, this is something I will check in with Dan, but if in the next calendar year, code enforcement is going to get new computers, they would be interested in moving to the Microsoft Surface or similar type setup as what our environmental health field, our division does, which is very helpful for field, you know, people who spend a lot of time in the field. Next slide please. Okay, last, we're getting very close. Okay, C D D administration, that includes my position in one account clerk. The role of, of C D D administration is to organize, direct, administer, and administer the operations of community development, which includes the divisions of, which we all know. Next slide please. The C D D division, or C D D, it's not really a division, but administration is a little bit different than all the others. What we do is we balance to zero every year, so we put together what all of our expenditures are, and then that is divided percentage-wise by the payroll from the, in other divisions, and so it's explained there. And that allocation was set up in the early nineties when the Community Development Department was formed. Next slide please. So, this is the representation. So, we have our expenditures, and we have our revenues, and they equal, because the roads division is the largest division in, in the department and has the greatest payroll. Of course, it pays the, the most contribution to that division, so. Next slide please. So, my goal in our, what I would really like for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is to have the account clerk position that's allocated to this div, to C D D admin, to be upgraded from an account clerk to administrative assistant, because I need someone who has more advanced budgeting skills, who can help me with administrative items and so on. And, and this is something that prior directors have had, that I have not had since I've been in this position. So, it would be a really great.
Time's up.
Wow, okay. It's really funny, because I'm, I am almost done. Thank you. So, that would, it would be extremely helpful, and as part of the reclassification request that is due, that are due this Thursday at noon, I'm going to be submitting paperwork for that, but I will be outlining different options, because I know money is incredibly important, and it would be an increased cost, but I'm trying to figure that one out. Next slide please. Thank you. And then, if you have any questions.
That was great, Heidi, thank you. Any questions from the board?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to reiterate that you're going to get, you know, harassed by your, your other department heads, but you're just such a rock star in all, and this, it just clearly is shown here, that you're managing really five really important functions that keep this community going. And so, when we get to see this, when we have this opportunity to really know what your position entails, it's something that's super beneficial for me, and, and so I just want to say thank you for taking the time to do that, and thank you for always being so prepared, and so I just want to say I'm very grateful.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Just a quick question. How long did that take you to put together?
I would probably say maybe twenty hours.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe not that much, actually. I spent about six hours on Saturday and probably another ten in the office, so. But, but if this was something, you know, feedback that you give me today, and we have these again in the future, I'm, I have my template somewhat, or I can trim from it whenever I hear feedback. You know, you can share that with me afterwards.
Okay, and of course, you did a great job, but I was just curious.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi.
Okay.
Okay, is there any, do we have any public comment on Heidi's presentation?
Good afternoon, Dan. Yes, excellent report there. A department that could use more funding, you know, every citizen would benefit from having an increase in community development, so may make that suggestion. I was just going over the different types of budgets, and I was wondering why planning, the planning budget might not be in there, also capital improvements, and how you take those four budgets and kind of merge them together, or why everything's so separate on the county budget. Also wondering if I could ask her or give some clarification on, you know, Governor Newsom in the state sued Huntington Beach recently for the Housing Authority Act, and I was just wondering if that was a good or bad thing for the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. I'm sure we're not going to do a budget workshop here in, in open session, but trying to address your, trying to address your questions maybe offline or through email or something. So, let's move on to twenty-two. Dan, you're, you're on the hook here for your presentation for I T.
Oh, look at that.
Oh, geez.
Oh, check this out.
Well, I knew we were following Heidi.
Yeah.
And I can, just quickly, years ago, I went to an I T conference in San Diego, it was a long time ago, but you sit down, start at random tables, and every county presents, and I happened to follow L.A. County.
Oh.
And I feel a little bit the same way right now, so we'll, we'll just kind of go through it, see what we get. So, I'm going to start off with, so I know a lot of the questions. I, I think it's accurate, I don't know. I, one of the questions you had was our recruitment and retention, you know, knock on wood, but we haven't had an issue in I T. We've, we've been able to stay fully staffed, we did have some issues a little bit during COVID, but we became fully staffed, and we have a lot of experience in the department. I'm going to quickly go over the names. Carla Allen's been there twenty-six years, she's the assistant director, but she spent many of her years over at Health and Human Services. She basically ran our operation over there, which, as you'll see through this presentation, they're our largest, by far largest apartment, the most needs, she ran that pretty seamlessly. Rachel Serena's been here twenty-two years, she is our G I S coordinator, and every application you see that comes up, we'll talk about, there's always a G I S component now, there's a lot at the sheriff's office, Health and Human Services, obviously, Community Development. But Rachel also takes on a lot of our other duties around here, she's back there doing media now, she did help with this presentation quite, quite a lot during COVID, she was instrumental in a lot of our support for that, policies, training, she takes on a lot of other areas. Calvin Moretti has been with the county seventeen years. Now, I like his story and a couple here, he was a high school work experience, that's how he started with us. So, that doesn't count these years here, he did go away to college for a while, came back, we hired him. He's gone through every, every job that we've had, every location, and now he's basically our top network person, he's our, he's the county's security officer, we have to designate someone, so he's in charge of cyber, cybersecurity and all the rules and reporting that we have to do for that, and there is quite a bit. Sylvia Wakefield's been here eleven years, same thing, she was a high school work experience individual, and we hired her after high school, and she's also been at every location, sheriff's office. She's stationed at Health and Human Services right now, and does a fabulous job over there. Christina Lopez, eight years, started with, I think she started part-time, but doing courier and some of the media stuff back then, which has changed quite a bit. She became a tech trainee, she really took to it, and now she is stationed over at the sheriff's office, which is one of our more difficult locations to be stationed. They're, I don't know who's here, he's here, they are needy. Which that is fine, I'll keep my eye on them. Dexter Lawson has been with the county for eight years, he was also stationed at the S O, which is, most of our staff gets stationed out there for a period of time, we like to rotate them through, it causes some grief at times when we do the rotations, but it's better for the sheriff's office, it's better for Health and Human Services. When we rotate people, we have more people that can respond to their needs. Dexter did his time out there, as we say. He is now moving into some of the more advanced networking, working with Calvin to learn some of the cybersecurity and networking issues for the county. Mackenzie Cervantes, she's been here two years, she's, you see her back there all the time, well, she hides behind the monitor, but.
She does a great job.
Yeah, she does, start with our courier, she does the media services, she does a lot of stuff. She does, also participated with this presentation here, she's getting into some of the tech duties, there's a scanning project, which we're going to talk a lot more about here in a minute. Matt Hurley, he's been here for two years, he worked for the county for a different department for a while, came over to us, he is an amazing amount of energy, we stationed him out at K Street, so he's Health and Human Services, pretty much specific out there, does a wonderful job, supports public health. You know, when we came out of COVID, there's a lot of changes, and a lot of new technology came in, Health and Human Services won especially public health, so we, we've always, not always, but quite often stationed someone out there, and since COVID, we've always had someone out there. Chase Acosta, again, came two years ago, same time as Matt, he's doing courier, doing, he's going to be training on the media sites, you'll see him more over here, and he also does a lot of work out of the Flynn Center, technical stuff, installing computers, he's going around doing a bunch of stuff. So, anyway, I, I love my staff, they are superstars, and I'm just lucky that I haven't had the turnover that other departments had, hopefully I didn't jinx something there. Also on this slide, it's a busy slide, we support about five hundred users out there, we get about twenty-seven hundred tickets per year that come through our help desk system. There's over thirteen hundred devices, printers, laptops, cell phones, servers and stuff that are out there. We do have a, we process the county's mail, so there's a hundred and twenty thousand pieces of mail we process per year, and about five hundred and fifty print jobs, so we're also the county's print service. That goes down every year because the printers are so much better that we supply in the offices, they can do their own, but we still do about five hundred and fifty per year. Some of the recent upgrades, the county website, that was done about a year ago, a little over a year ago, we do continue to update it. This, a lot of these things I'm going to do are, they were requested by the board, and some are, were other requirements, but the board wanted us to have more public presence out there, get more information out to the public, so this was obviously one of the ones we did. We believe the website looks good. It was also an A D A compliance issue, we had to meet a lot of A D A compliance, and you'll see that's a common feature in a lot of these things. Obviously, it's easier to navigate, easier to search for things, we're happy with the way it came out, and it is constantly being updated. Over to the right at the top is the agenda management system, so it's a new interface of the public. The main reason for doing that, there are some internal improvements we got with Kylie, who was awesome getting that implemented and working with it, little bugs we've been working out, but hopefully it's, I don't know if it's easier for, but it definitely does organize things in a different way. It's also, it's A D A compliant, our previous one was not, so there are some requirements there. Another big one we did with county code and admin manual, bottom right on your screen, working with county council on that, C D D was quite a bit on that one, whether I liked it or not, but Heidi really knows the code, so she definitely had a lot of input on that. The new side, again, is A D A compliant, it's searchable, the admin manual was never part of our original codes, you could find them both, but you had to search them separately. Now, they're in an easier, easier format to update and easier to search. Document archive system, and all these, all these programs we kind of mentioned right here, especially this one, there's links to it from the Board of Supervisors site. Right now, this system we did, which is part of the county code, but we uploaded so far about twenty-two hundred documents, and these are ordinance. but we uploaded so far about 2,200 documents. These are ordinances, agreements, contracts. I think there's some budget books. It's a lot of archived documents. Not something we would change. They're not going to be memos. We did, I think ordinances go back to 1960. They're kind of fun to actually go through and browse, but you can also, in one spot, with one search, you can search all those documents at once. So if you were to, wanted to search something on Lake Earl, you can put whatever search term you want. It'll tell you how many agreements come up, how many ordinances, and you can do some research on there. It's a pretty neat system to use. Yes, it's out on the public right now. It's been out there for a while. We're not done uploading documents. There's still a lot more archived documents, and I'm working with Kylie on it. We've pulled a lot of stuff out of different systems, so I think we'll have quite a bit of time left to do it, but there is a substantial amount of stuff out there right now. And then Supervisor Wilson got the, got the link on here for the Streaming Services. Streaming Services obviously changed through COVID. We very quickly had to switch to the Zoom only. We had to learn that, which was, was a little bit of a challenge at first, but then actually more of a challenge was coming back and coming here, and everybody wanted to keep Zoom. So we set up everybody to do Zoom. These weren't our customers before, but yet when they came back and started to meet here, they wanted to keep our services because they want to keep Zoom and still meet in this room. We're having trouble doing that with one person. Now, for the board meetings, we, a lot of times have two people back here, but for most meetings, in order to keep it affordable to the customers, we had to try to keep to one person. So we've done quite a bit of upgrades. We kept the Zoom integration in there. We've added a few other little tricks in there, including this Agenda Management System, and we still have a few more things to do, but that, we think those improvements worked out well. Active projects right now. I included the drone. It's not a huge part of what we do, but it did get some, Supervisor Starky brought it up. I think Supervisor Wilson brought it up at some points. We've had a few projects this year that have been successful. A lot of them are with community development, but we, Lake Earl Breach, Breach Area, that was actually with Fish and Wildlife. It was their request to do it. So we went out there, and we did have to go through a, basically a class with them. They like to teach as they, they have us do the project. But we mapped the sand displacement when they do the breaching. That was neat to see. Clamath Beach Road was another one we did. I guess there were some washout there. They wanted to check, see how the repairs were working, if they needed to do any more work. Pebble Beach Drive was a huge one. Supervisor Starky went out there to watch that one, went out, had to go out several times to do it. I don't totally know the end results of that, but we did map the bluffs there, and I think they were looking for washout on the bluffs. The maps came out good. It creates 3D maps, and they can, they can look at this stuff in detail and worked out well. We've done other ones that aren't on here, but we've done several projects at the airport. Yes, we do fly a drone around at the airport. We get all the necessary approvals. We are licensed to do it, and we work closely with the airport actually on all of these that with, are within, anything within five miles of an airport, we have to get approval from them, and we work closely with them to do it. We've also done projects at the fairgrounds, Pike Field. There's been a few other little ones we've done. Yeah, we, yeah, we took off from the dump site. There are some areas that we scanned over there. On the right-hand side, and this will be one of my requests moving forward, administration is already aware of this, but we currently have nine part-time employees that we've hired to do a pilot project, scanning building permits for community development. The grant that Heidi talked about is paying for this, this program. We provided the, the equipment, and Building Maintenance did a lot of work on the room. It's above the IT office. It's going great. The pilot part of it was, is it better for us to do it ourselves or to contract it out and have another company come in? They're scanning about 25,000 pages per week right now, and it's clear that it's better to do it ourselves if we can keep the employees and we can, we can keep that work going. So my request will be, this year is to maintain this. We will still have somebody left over from Heidi's grant to continue the building permit side, but there's been requests from admin to scan other documents that are out there. I think there's Board of Supervisors ones. I know Supervisor Howard just questioned those. HR ones, county, a lot of departments have documents up there, and so if I can get funding for that, we'll continue that. Whether that's an IT budget request, or whether it's those individual departments, we'll work with the budget team on that, but one form of that.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yes.
So there's a current grant for this, but what is the cost? Like, what would the budget look like for you? Like to ask for this, to do the additional documents?
Well, there's no way, so I can't calculate what it would take to do the additional documents. I, my approach for admin will be is, we can, I'll let them know how many people we can staff and how many documents we can do per year. This will be a multi-year project. We think if we could keep up these same numbers, we might get close to being done by the end of this calendar year with what CDD's initial request was. I don't know if they'll actually have enough money to, to support that, but we'll, we'll go with admin. If, if we received $100,000, we could do so much. If we received $50,000, we could do so much. And it might just come down to what departments can afford, and, you know, you're not just going to get it all done right away. It's going to be a multi-year project. So I don't know what that number is. I'm going to ask for it yet, and I guess it also depends on if it goes back to the other departments to ask, or if we kind of fund it as a general fund process, or if there's some other funding available for that, which there might be. Projects that are coming up soon. Joel will be, he's, this first one, Joel wants to go live now. So it's our next request system, and it handles public records requests. It is actually about ready to go. I just need to get a little more time to go through a couple more settings. It'll be active. So it'll be a portal on the site. When somebody has a public records request, it'll basically fill out an online form. It'll go to County Council's office, and they can then forward it off to a department or determine how it's going to get fulfilled. The documents can be uploaded into the system, and then it can be provided to the requester electronically. Additionally, if it's a, if it's a request that has public benefit, it can be just listed out there in a list that anybody from the public can retrieve it, since it is a public records request. So if you have multiple requests for the same thing, they can just search those and be done with it. And yes, Joel, I do hope, I still hope to have that done soon. Shelter Pro is on the right-hand side. It's Animal Services, and it'll be Animal Licensing. In our case, mostly people, dog licensing. I hope this month, we're, we are behind on this, but there's some, some details with the payment portal and some of the data that went across, but I think they're pretty confident they're going to be able to do training this month and get that system going. Moving forward, Heidi talked about this a little bit, but Civic Gov, CDD Building Permit Solution. I think we're probably a good couple months out before we start getting some training. It'll probably roll out somewhat slowly, but the, on the public side, they'll have a portal to be able to apply for building permits. So a lot of what they have to come in to do now, they'll be able to do online if they choose to. We have, I think, some bets of how many will take advantage of that, how many still want to go to the counter. They'll be able to pay online. They'll be able to do a lot more online and schedule inspections online. Building inspector is a part of this. They'll have tablets to go out and do the inspections, get the information instantly back to community development. Notices can go out electronically. You know, the hope is here that it just, it makes the whole process easier and more beneficial to the department. Yes, Heidi is frugal, but really good process. We went through a lot of demonstrations. They had a lot of great questions. It was probably one of the more thorough ones we've done, bringing in vendors and bringing them back multiple times. I think they made a good choice. And even though there was a lot of work upfront on that, Heidi's crew has really taken over on this project, and it's really not that much work on here. I just wanted to take a little bit of credit for it, even though she'll be doing most of the work on it. Yeah, thank you. Broadband Lata Grant. I've gotten a couple questions about this because the board passed, agreed to participate in this Lata Grant. I think the county got $500,000. Most of this money will be sent off to consultants to prepare a network design for potential broadband projects in our area. It's just designs, and I say just designs because I, there is more money coming. There's a lot more money potentially coming to Donut County. Most of that comes, they think sometime around 2025. But these network designs will help put us in a place to apply for projects in the future. And there'll be more projects like this, but this particular company will be coming in, I think, pretty soon. We will be doing presentations with the board to talk about what they found and where you want the designs to be. And this has to be unserved or underserved areas in Donut County and the unincorporated area of Donut County, so not in the city limit. So it's somewhat limited, but that will come back to the board. Go through PC and server upgrades. Yes, Heidi, we will be doing those. We, we're behind COVID. We couldn't get the equipment. So we're trying to catch up now. We're basically a full step behind, so we have about 300 PCs we have to catch up on. We're starting that process now. Actually, it started last week. We finally got some equipment in, and will be, probably take us about a year to get caught up. What Heidi mentioned, more departments will want mobile access. I've already talked to Renell. We'll do a project with them, where some of their staff, instead of getting desktop PCs, will get laptops, be able to accommodate more modern ways of working what we've gone through for COVID. Other projects, Probation Case Management System was a big one for us. That's getting near the end of the RFP process. Sheriff will be huge upgrades. This will probably take the next couple of years, but they are funded for us. So, computer, CAD is Computer Aided Dispatch, Records Management, and GL Management Systems. That was funded through COPS grant, federal allocation money. I think we're pretty close to doing the paperwork on that. There was a lot of paperwork, even though it was already granted to us. So we're pretty close on that. And then we're looking for budget for new radio, I would say consoles for the dispatchers, the radio side of it. There's a lot of aspects of radio that you'll probably hear about. I think you heard it at the last meeting. And there's going to be lots of different radio projects. It's not just one. There has to be a lot to do, whole system. So my side of it is looking at the dispatchers and how they, how they dispatch just that portion of their consoles. So we're, we're going to try to look at money. Won't come out of IT budget. It'll either be a sheriff budget, or it could be an OES budget or something like that.
Oh, I just wanted to chime in because I know this is something we worked on years ago, but it's also, one of the avenues is through the 911 Fund, which normally allocates funding for maintaining the 911 CAD service and dispatch service. But that funding, you can and, and request to have additional funds allocated to Donut County for any type of upgrades or special needs or, you know, build outs. So it, even though they have a set amount of allocated money that come to us every year, that board does hear and will, you know, address special projects or other needs that need to be built out.
And yes, we used those funds about four years ago for the 911 dispatch. So when the phone calls come in, they upgraded that, those consoles, and they did talk about radios. It's not part of the funding, but you can apply as a special circumstance, and they suggested our next round, which I believe is next year, so that might be an option for that. I think it's every five years you can pull down money from that. The other, the other, this, this will be a multi-year project, but we put on there the County ERP. It stands for Enterprise Resource Planning Solution. I don't know why it's called this. It's the county's financial system. It would be probably the biggest project I'll ever take on. It'll affect every county department here. It's everything from how we pay the bills, payroll. We're going to also try to add in human resources, employee management. Every newer, we're trying to update all the portals that people use and how they get their paychecks and W2s and all that information. So we're starting that. The RFP went out for that last week, so we have some meetings this week with vendors. Expect to get some responses in the middle of June, and then the board will hear more about it then. Video security upgrades. There's, there's a lot that's going to go on at the Sheriff's Office and Health and Human Services. We've already got funding for both of those. There'll be a few others. I think there's some at the Flynn, but that's become a, a project that started out slowly, but it's something that never seems to end, so I'll let you know we do that. And we're able to get, all this video traffic is now seen in dispatch, so they have large screens over there, and they have access to over 100 cameras right now. They can look at the airport. They can look at Health and Human Services facilities. They can have a lot of peaks around the county, and they, they hear positive things about that. Budget, the budgets are pretty straightforward in IT. So the IT itself, most of our expenses are, are salaries and benefits, which probably you're going to see in most departments. 13% of our expenses were services supplies. It could be just running the office, some equipment that we purchased. And then the bottom part of it is just revenue for IT. 43% of our revenue comes from Health and Human Services. Thank you. But we also, we station a couple of people out, out at their facilities for that. Another 17% comes from other direct charges that we charge, child support, roads, and then we usually have some kind of OES grant for something, so there's usually some money in there for that. 30% is the cost plan, which you talked about in Heidi's. It's basically the other departments, their IT charges get reimbursed back to us. And then 10% of our revenue is stuff that we sell, so the printing jobs, the posted sales, and stuff like that. Now, we can operate, buy the computers and do all that out of the IT, so we use a technology fund. All the counties contribute money into that fund based on what they use. If they lease computers, they pay. If they use email, they pay for that. So that's by itself, 78% of that fund is software and hardware maintenance, paying for the servers, paying for phone systems, paying for Google Workspace, all those applications that we do. And then 18% are computer leases for those departments that do lease. For example, Health and Human Services. Some of theirs are leased, but some are provided by the state, so they'll, they'll pay a lease charge for just the ones that they lease and depend on what software they use. That's all I got, except that cool slide.
That's great, Dan. Thank you. Do you have any questions for me? Any board members for Dan?
Do you have, I mean, you, you kind of laid it out there, and you prioritized some projects. Is, are those, like, let's, let's start with the whole system-wide for the auditors and everybody. And that, is that like a five-year plan, or is that something that is this year's plan?
So, the auditor, I would expect the, the basic parts of it to be completed in a year. But in order to get every county department on board and fully utilizing the system, I'm going to guess it's about a three-year process. So we can switch everybody, and they can use time cards, and they can do something. But for them to be all trained, how to do reporting, how to self-help, how to change the way we do business now, because we don't do it that way now. We, most of the stuff is run by the auditor's office. You need certain reports, or you need a lot of assistance. You can't self-help in a lot of things. So I anticipate about a three-year process, but you'll see pretty big changes internally in the next year.
Okay. And then, you know, being on the Middle Mile Advisory Committee, you and I have sat down and talked about that last mile and, and how that's going to, do you have the capacity for us to ask you to help us apply for the, the funding that we're going to need for that last mile?
Yeah, I will do what I can. So I do attend some broadband meetings, and I think there's a lot of confusion. There's like so many sources of funds that come into it, and how you apply hasn't been told to us yet. So I definitely want to be a part of it.
Absolutely. I think that we need to, as a board, really know that, that we have to stay on top of it because the funding is just going to go away, and we're going to be left behind. So it's one of those things that, if necessary, we need to, to think about how we could add capacity to your department in order for us to make sure we, we go after that funding and manage those grants and whatever needs to happen. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there, that, that is something that's pretty vital for our community.
I agree, and we may need to, or we may to look, may need to look at some consulting at some source to help us navigate some of that. My budget this year will have some minor payroll adjustments. I'm not asking for any new positions, but I'm not afraid to ask if, if needed, so good relationship with admin and doing that, so.
I just want to comment, you know, it's, I appreciate IT and what you folks do. It's such a benefit and critical to Donut County's service to have the experience that, that your staff has, and especially over the years, because our experience with IT, especially in, in county government, is that we cannot seem to keep up with the pace of, of development. And so the need of us maintaining these older systems so that we have access to the information that we no longer would have access to if it wasn't for the fact that you have the technological, technological expertise and the years of service, having put the systems in and having attended to them for the years that, that we've kept them in service. That would not be possible if it wasn't for the years of service that we have in your department and with your personnel. It's key. You know, it's always a struggle for government to keep up with the pace of technology because the revenue lines aren't there for us all the time. And so we do appreciate you and your staff and, and how responsive you always are to us and, and to me coming in. And so we do appreciate you and your staff and, and how responsive you always are to us and, and to me coming in. Thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate those words. I think you called me old, but I, that's fine.
You are and you're bald, so.
Fair, fair enough.
Thank you, Dan. I'm kind of curious, how much space is needed for like the CDD scanning project? Are we, I mean, how, how many, how much space do you manage in your department? Terabytes, I imagine?
Oh.
Oh, no, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, not physical, not physical space, sorry. Sorry, yeah.
I should have brought Calvin in. So I can tell you part of our upgrades is a new, just part of a regular lease process that we do with our servers. So we, a new system is coming in. I think it's, I think we, we back up about four terabytes right now.
Wow.
You know, we'll manage a little bit more. The new sheriff system we're looking in, where it's going to go, probably not stationed at the sheriff's office. It'll be located maybe over here in our quote data center here. So we have a lot more abilities than, than we've had in the past. Yeah, for our small county, that's, it's a lot of data.
That's pretty impressive.
Yeah, and my iPad's getting full, so I'll be by this.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you very much. Any public comment on Dan's presentation? Okay. Thank you for that. I, I love the, the levity and the, the great working relationship that staff have with each other.
I think.
And I'm learning a lot too, so I'm very much appreciating.
Yeah, when I worked on the admin manual, that was the best part about it was watching the staff harass each other and joke back and forth. So I do love to see that too.
Joel, welcome, sir.
I don't want Chris to miss this, you know, he loves.
Chris, yeah, he's got to go to Sacramento today, so.
I used to spend a lot of time at this podium and I don't think I've been here since the county council trip. You all look very different from here than you do over there. So, you know, most of what I do is confidential. It's not really an open session issue. So this will be a lot briefer and simpler than theirs. This doesn't work? Okay, there you go. A quick overview of our office, a little over seven hundred thousand. Most of that is salaries and benefits. Servant supplies is almost, well, it's a lot of like insurance and things we don't have control over. Books and travel and training what we need as lawyers and then fifty thousand for outside counsel. There's not a lot going on there. We've got four employees. I'm extremely lucky to have those, the relationships that person takes with them, all the burnout from the work dumping on the people that stay. So that is just absolutely the biggest part of my life. That's cool. So this has been an excellent year though, probably the best year maybe ever. We are fully staffed. We've got a legal secretary that just became a paralegal, which is going to help us. It's, it's going to just, there's so much more that she can do now, like legally and technically. We've got new contract forms that only just launched. We're still troubleshooting, there's going to be stuff, but by, by just making everything kind of rigid and simple, we can cut down a ton of attorney time and, and all the weird and different stuff that comes through. It's going to free us up. New software, we had been using Dan's help desk ticket system, which was really better than we had before, which was all paper. But as far as integrating with our timekeeping and going back to old records and things, it wasn't quite getting it done. So it's a new software that people are also going to have to get used to. We've done a lot of training this year. We've actually gone over our budget because we had the CSEC thing come up we didn't budget for. So we're going to have to move a little bit of money from outside counsel line there. But we couldn't really train much during the pandemic. There weren't conferences and then we've got two new young people. And we're also going to spend more on, on Nicole's training now that she's a paralegal. Invest more and she's got, you know, continuing education to do, so. Last year I asked for five grand for just the office aesthetics because it was depressing in there. And building manager did a great job, like a wonderful job. It feels really good in there. That has a big impact on morale. And so for five grand to get new floors, paint, blinds, have it smell better and be less weird and moldy, it really is just great paying for a buck.
It does look nice in there.
The way our office is funded is, you know, the cost plan, hours are allocation based. So, you know, you take ten percent of our time, you basically get ten percent of our cost, you know, two years later. So where our hours go is really the same as where our money comes from. Pretty similar to Dan's, I think he said forty-two percent was DHHS. We are usually between forty-two and forty-six percent, pretty, pretty consistently, even with staff turnovers. That's just, is what is needed. Everything else there is either general fund. We are now down to only one outside agency, which is tri-agency. Outside agencies are not my favorite thing because they just are outside the system and sort everything down. But tri-agency we've had since two thousand and twelve and I'm emotionally attached to it at this point. This is, so there's five counties in California that have the exact same office blueprint that we do. Three attorneys and a support staff. Amador there, I couldn't find the split between general fund and non-general fund. But you can see there that while our funding is reasonably the same as theirs overall, we're a little bit less, I think, because we're a younger office and as people get to longevity, it'll, it'll cost more. You know, praying that anybody ever gets to longevity in our office. But you can see that our general fund split is about fifty-fifty. I think that Delmar County, it's, it's weird to compare counties. Everybody has different things going on, different needs, different ways they account for things. But we have a higher charitable for our caseload than anybody per capita. And we just have like very intense population to serve. And so if anything, I would say our general fund departments are probably getting less legal services than our counterparts are. And I don't think any other staff is realistic for our office, but things like streamlining, contracting. I'm really excited about next request. I can't tell you how much time we spend with just emails bouncing all over the county with different people got public records requests and different people have the data and who's going to respond, who's going to redact. If we can just have it this nice little portal, I think these types of things turn into other staff time. And with our new software management program, that is a lot of clerical work we don't do. We, I'll give that in a second. We, we every year usually spend twelve hundred dollars on printer ink. And last year we bought those cartridges and we still haven't used them. And we're, I don't think we've bought a real paper this year. And so going almost completely paperless has saved us quite a bit of money, but also just time and energy. And it's just, is I think way better. And so more staff will probably never happen, but more efficiencies we're always working on. This is the major challenge of our office. You know, in, in the eight years that I've been here, the longest we've had all four employees is twenty-one months. The longest we had all three attorneys is twenty-five months. And that was right up until Liz left. You know, when you turn over an attorney, you know, you lose a third of your office. What county department loses a third of their staff on a day and has to cope? It is incredibly grueling. Six different attorneys and three different support staff in that time. You know, building institutional knowledge, keeping it, passing it down. It's, it's a slog always. And so I'm, I'm, this is the major thing that I'm spending my time and energy on this year is, is trying to retain my staff, make them feel engaged, make them feel committed, make them feel rewarded. We've been together nine months. So if I'm here this time next year saying my staff is still here, we'll match that twenty-one months. That'll be, you know, as successful as the office has ever been in that time. I'm trying to do everything I can to retain people for free. I have kind of pushed my people into the bar association and the law library and things where they can have a leadership role and some connections and feel committed to something. Those don't cost money and they're not even county time. I'm really flexible with scheduling. I'll let them tell work from wherever they want. They don't take me up on it, but I, you know, I hope that they feel like, you know, I, I'm not a strict guy. You got a laptop, you got a cell phone, you're a lawyer, you can do your job from anywhere on the planet Earth. And then the biggest thing that I try to find is meaningful work for people. I think it's easy to throw the young attorney on contract review and let them rot. But no, no one's going to stay in my office when I do that. So I do a lot of PRAs personally for that reason. And, you know, there's tons of stuff going on between homeless stuff and opioid stuff. You know, there's a lot of things that attorney can plug into and feel like, I can't leave. This project needs me. And that is really how I've stayed here all these years. And I think that that is the best thing we can do is give people work, give them projects, give them something to be ambitious about and something to commit to. And then the things that do cost money. We have a pretty generous travel and training budget. We always have. We have to maintain our CLEs. But most of our travel and training goes to county council conferences where we build relationships and it expands really the size of our office because we have access to several hundred really good experienced, you know, public agency lawyers. In this budget, I'm asking for a small increase from twenty-five thousand to thirty thousand because we will spend more on Nicole and because travel is getting more expensive. And then the other thing is quick promotions. If you go somewhere else, you might make more starting out, but it could take you a long time to get, you know, move it along in the chain of command. Our, our newest deputy is almost a year. That makes you qualify to be deputy two under our minimum qualifications. He's got a year of experience before he came here. So probably the most expensive budget request for me is to allow me to make him a two. You know, I think when I came here, and, and I came into a department that was kind of in disarray, you know, and it was, it was county council was on her way out and then it was Liz and I and we were like very young. But I got a promotion or a raise of some kind absolutely every year until I became county council. You know, and that's the kind of thing that will keep young people looking forward. I know not every department has that option, but for me, we always have a need because we can't hold on to anybody. So. So here's, here's some things that we're saving in our budget. Our office supplies, we could even go down more. I, I can't remember why it went up to seventy-five hundred. It used to always be five thousand a year. We don't really use it, except every now and then we need to buy some office equipment or a printer cartridge or something. So that can go back down. The book and subscriptions, we're just using less and less paper books. Westlaw is getting our needs done. We're not printing anything anymore. And so the five thousand that I'm asking for in travel and training is, is offset by these other reductions. Yeah, as I've said, I want to keep the fifty thousand that we have in professional services. That's more than we used to have. We used to be, you know, twenty-five, thirty. We increased that really when Autumn left and I thought I was going to have this long period of time without somebody. I've never really been able to find a consistent, good outside counsel that I can rely on as if they're another deputy. It would be great if that could happen. But being out, out of the county, not having the relationships, everything still has to go through me and I have to triangulate with everybody, so it doesn't save me any time at all, I could just do it myself. And so I want to keep that money because we do have things like swamp cleanups coming on. We've got, we have things going on. And, you know, if we don't use them, not use it, I think we are at thirty-seven thousand left for this year. It's not like we're burning through a lot of money. And then the career advancement for a deputy. I think that might be my last one. Any questions about that?
I just have the one about Nicole. When she made it to paralegal, did she get a pay bump? Is there something in, in the structure that allowed her?
Yeah, so actually in last year's budget, the board funded the change for the second half of the year. And so it took her a little longer to get the certificates than we thought. And so she'll, I'll make her one really soon here. And then, yeah, so she'll be a paralegal one and then there's a paralegal two she can get down the road to.
No good deal.
There's a career ladder for her too.
So thank you for this, very much appreciated. It sounds like this is going to be a silly question for me to even ask, but do you have any burning projects that you want to work on in this next year and accomplish within this next year aside from, you know, just kind of maintaining and keeping your staff going?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, the more the staff has experience and relationships, the more work comes in, right? Like lawyers kind of create work. If you don't have a lawyer that you feel comfortable asking, then you don't ask and then you don't get legal work and then our office doesn't know about it, right? It's not a big deal until it all blows up later. But the more the lawyers are there building relationships, the more is going to come in. And that is actually my biggest goal is, I remember when I started out there, only two of us and people just didn't ask for stuff. But by the time Liz left, we were busy all the time because the more you're there, the more you're known, the more people need you. And so I now know that there's way more legal work than is coming in the door just because people either think we're too busy or they don't know us that well or there's turnover places or young staff doesn't know that they actually have a legal question. You know, they might think that it's not a legal question, don't ask the lawyers. And so, you know, as far as specific projects go, there are things like the, the swamp cleanups that I do, I need other things to fall into place before the legal work comes. But my biggest thing is I want everybody to stay and grow and for the county to start kind of treating us like we're a fully functioning office. Because when the pandemic hit, a lot of people, like the county just changed its shape, the work that was coming in, the types, like things went quiet, which, you know, we were down an attorney for six months too. So like people stopped asking these things and everything is weird. So we're still building back up to that place we were, I think, in late two thousand and nineteen.
Because even when Autumn was here and she did the redistricting, I mean, I really felt that she found a value in doing that special project. So I'm glad that you brought that forward as, as an, you know, as a, something that does help retain staff is when we are doing meaningful work, we want to continue it, we want to see it through.
Yeah, and I, I think that that is, when, when I, I don't care if I was here for maybe a year and a half for so and cannabis came in the door and I ended up spending like ninety thousand dollars of staff time at, you know, two thousand and seventeen prices on that project. And, you know, it, I learned a ton, I met a lot of people and I felt really invested. And so I think that's probably why I'm here honestly. So look for those opportunities for other people.
Chris, you have some?
One short question. Obviously, law allows for PRAs to continue. Obviously, the portal that Dan's building will hopefully help impact the amount of time that is taken out of IT, out of your department specifically, in other departments where those requests end up generating emails. Really like to know the cost. Have you ever looked at the cost of a PRA request on the budget, your budget specifically?
You know, because they all go to different departments and we don't, you know, when we bill or when we track our time, you know, we just write a little note. This went to the board supervisors, PRA, four and a half hours looking through emails. So there's not really any place I can go and pull that and say. Some of them are really time consuming, some of them aren't. It's more, like, once I have something to look at, like I can go through a thousand emails in an afternoon. I've done it, it seems miserable, but it, it's not as miserable as the part where you're shooting emails back and forth trying to figure out where the request came from, who's already responded, what's the timeline, what this person thinks, what they want, you know, who's going to do the thing. That part is what really is draining in the time is the coordinating. And so even though the records requests are going to keep coming in, having them all go through one spot, I think is going to make a really big difference. And, you know, if the board wants, we can create like a PRA line and, and really see what it costs.
It's a curiosity question because when I first started the board, it was very seldom. Today it's not so seldom and it's got to be impacting our overall budget.
Yeah, it, I'm sure it is. We get a lot from this organization called Mukrock, which is like a third-party vendor that people go through and they just spam us with these really ugly emails that look like junk. And I, you know, you can easily accidentally throw them away and they just keep hitting you with them and it's not a real person, it's like a bot. And so my favorite thing about this is you have to register an account and you have to go in there and have an email address and like be a person. And so just getting rid of those, what I kind of call spam PRAs, is going to be a big, big help to us.
Thank you.
Good question.
And I know one of the things we discussed about trying to, you know, keep your employees motivated and et cetera, especially in, in your field where we have specialized laws and specialized studies, whether it's public safety, labor laws, or whether it's, you know, is, is having that, maybe looking at ways that specialized training can be attained and then, and then, and then compensation, increasing, you know, someone's wage because of the fact that they, they've attained a certain training that's, that, you know, increases their value of service.
That's a really good idea because they, they do. That's a really good idea, because they do have, like, certificates. I know Child Welfare has one that's actually really hard to get, that I, you know, I've offered to pay for the training or to take the test out of our budget, but I've never really thought, oh, and I can give you a pay differential. That's something that would be hard to get to him, but I can try. That's a good idea.
We talked to Heidi about that today, too, so.
None of my employees are in a bargaining unit either. So, I do actually have the ability to do a little bit of some weird stuff, so. Good idea.
Good deal. Weird stuff. Thank you, Joel, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Chair, I have a hand raised online.
Outstanding. I was just about to open public comments, so let's start there.
Brandon, you are on, you just need to unmute your mic.
Hi, good afternoon, board. I'm sorry to have to join you via Zoom. I was a little frustrated at being ignored there a little bit, but these are really helpful, and I do appreciate the update from Joel County Council. Interesting thing to see, Bane, in hearing, and Mr. Howard, you know, good question about public requests for information. I should probably apologize to Joel for burdening them with probably too many questions, but I really do want to know, that's why I'm asking. And if you really wanted to help with Mr. Howard, Supervisor Howard, you could answer an email. So, that'd be something to consider. Yeah, blaming the pandemic, and when he got there, the department was in disarray. Things were, things are going on, we're cleaning up the swamp. More specifically, to the actual budget. The twenty-two, twenty-three budget says the actual amount spent for offices, four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars and some change. Twenty-two, twenty-three projection was five hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
I don't see him online anymore. I don't see him online at the moment. Wait, he's back on. Brandon, are you there?
I apologize if I got muted. I'm not sure what you heard, but I won't be expecting a response, so.
I'm sorry, Brandon, you're breaking up, you're breaking up pretty bad, so kind of having a hard time figuring out what you're saying.
Okay, I'm not sure if you're able to hear me, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Brandon, you're breaking up just too, too extremely to be able to understand what you're saying. Yeah, I'm going to have to just move on with other public comments. Is there any other public comment about Joel's presentation? Okay, with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting until our next meeting, April twenty-fifth, 2023. Thank you all for coming.